States of America and two republics for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love it when there's so many people. You want the lights down?
Yeah.
Well, we can't do that. They're pretty bright.
They are bright.
Yeah, I agree. Is it giving you a headache? So while we're adjusting our lights that are shining right in our eyeballs, having flashbacks, we are... Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, it's probably implied, but I just thought I'd lay it out that in the afternoon under budget discussion, we should set the date of the TNT meeting.
Oh, great.
We have to do that when we approve the proposed levy.
Great.
And then I think we have to talk about the library request, just because it says so in our joint powers agreement. It's over 5 percent, so I've got some copy of that, joint powers.
Okay. So during the budget discussion, we'll talk about the library request. Great, thank you. Any other adjustments? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So moved. Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right. So it looks like we have a few people here today for public comment. So I'll read our public comment guidelines. So at this time, the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of county concern. When invited to speak, please state your name, address, and the topic you are addressing. Members of the public may speak respectfully for up to five minutes. The public comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. So at this time, I know that Don Davison was here earlier, so I'd like to start the public comment with you, Don. And if you wouldn't, if you would sign on the sign-up sheet as well.
Thank you.
You have five minutes. Thank you.
I'll only take a minute.
Okay.
I got up at the break of dawn today and drove around my neighborhood, and then I went up to Maple Hill Church and sat there and meditated for a while. And I just want you to know that we love living here. This is our dream. We have lived here for 40 years. And I think you're going to be taking that dream away from many, many people with the way you are proposing to increase our taxes. From year one to last year, $7 million. In the next 10 years, you're proposing to double that. So you can talk about affordable housing, but you're making life unaffordable for many, many people who want to move here and live the same dream that we have dreamed. One of the advantages of having served the public is that I'm very well acquainted with allers. And after our meeting last week, I talked to them. And they said they were given a course of action, not to keep taxes down, but three ways to increase taxes. And that was their charter, and that's what they proposed. But seriously, look at the charts. You're talking about doubling taxes in 10 years. So I think you need to reconsider where you're going and ask sometimes, what can we do without? Maybe there are some things that we don't need. Maybe there are some things that don't need to be funded. But you're destroying the dream for a lot of people who want to move here. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay. Carla, you were also here earliest. Would you like to speak? Okay. Jim?
I wrote mine out. My name is Jim Boyd. I live on Birch Drive, west of town. Madam Chair, county board members, good morning. I'm the executive director of the Cook County Chamber of Commerce. The Board of the Chamber has not had an opportunity to meet and review the county budget and levy proposals under consideration, so I have no position on those questions at this time. I would, however, like to make several points. After you set the preliminary levy, you can reduce it, but you cannot increase it. So please ensure you set a preliminary levy this afternoon that gives you sufficient room to make the most responsible decision you can later this year. Given the level of the levy increases that have been proposed, inevitably, there has been a great deal of discussion, some of it rather heated. You've been inundated with opinions. I'd like to reinforce a few incontrovertible facts that should have a prominent place in the continuing conversation. One, over recent years, the county board has consistently failed to raise enough revenue in a given year to cover the expenses incurred in that same year. This is what Administrator Cadwell means when he says the budget hasn't been balanced. The board has used basically two devices to cover the revenue gap. It has kicked expenses down the road into subsequent years, as you did last December, and it has dipped into its reserve to cover a portion of that gap. Now Administrator Cadwell has encouraged you to acknowledge that neither device is fiscally responsible. He has suggested instead that you confront your real choice, cut services or increase revenues. In this, he is just doing the job you hired him to do. Please do not kill the messenger. Two, while large proposed levy increases inevitably have raised alarm in some quarters, they should be considered in the context of current tax burdens. And it is a fact, a fact, not an opinion, a fact, that the existing property tax burden on Cook County businesses is about average for Minnesota. The Lake County is frequently used as a comparison. A business in two harbors, for example, pays about the same percentage of its value in property taxes as a business in Grand Marais, about 3.5 percent annually. That tax is a deductible business expense and inevitably is passed along to customers. Cook County businesses do not now appear to be at a tax disadvantage with businesses elsewhere in Minnesota. As concerned homesteads, those houses occupied by their owners, the tax burden borne by Cook County residents in 2016 was the lowest, the lowest in Minnesota, as a percent of the property value of those homes, the lowest, and among the lowest as a percentage of the income of the owners. So whether you take the value of the home or the income of the owners, our taxes are either the lowest or among the lowest in the state of Minnesota. That's a fact. That's not an opinion. That's a fact. That said, the increases you're contemplating are very large. Of course, some property owners strenuously object to them. Your job, the one you were elected to do, and I recognize how hard it is, is to try to devise the best possible balance between the burden you will inflict on property owners and the essential duties of county government you must fund. In the end, it probably comes down to a fairly simple question. How much must the community pay to take adequate care of our kids and our roads? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mary. Mr. Smith, are you here for public comment as well? Okay. Didn't want to call you out, but we're in that time. Mr. Smith is available. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Mary Somnus, and I am, first of all, want to share this photo with you. We have begun to clear the land in Grand Marais for our workforce housing project. This printout is the first of the four homes that will be built in this construction season for the winter. Very excited about that. We were delighted to bring this project to Grand Marais. Then I just also wanted to talk a little bit about the budget and levy process that you're going through. The Cook County News-Herald on September 9th reported that a survey would be sent to all Cook County property taxpayers, but that doesn't seem to be the case. And I just want to make you aware of a little bit of a survey that I did myself. I'm a taxpayer, and I did not receive the survey. One EDA board member received the survey early on. One received it after the deadline. One received it yesterday. And the four others did not receive the survey. I've also spoken with some friends who are taxpayers that also did not receive the survey. And one friend shared with me that she knows a couple that received four copies of the survey. So it just suggests to me that the survey results, when we see them, when they're published in the paper, whenever that's going to be, they may or may not, I think may not, reflect the community, after all. It doesn't seem to be an accurate surveying, scientifically correct, of all Cook County And then about, you know, setting the preliminary levy this afternoon, I want you to, it's not easy to say such a thing, but I want you to set it as high as you think you need to, and I want you to think about maybe getting this over within one year. I'm afraid that prolonging this conversation for three years could do more damage to our community than good. So, you know, I don't know what your ceiling is, but give yourselves room to continue to have that conversation about the best approach, whether it's rip off that Band-Aid and be done with it, or average it out. You know, it's, I'm not the expert on that, but it seems like you need, we need to think about that some more. And I just know that, you know, it's a, we're in a perfect storm with catching up on property valuations and assessments and catching up with past decisions and debts that have been carried forward. And I know you're all working really hard to do the best you can for the people that elected you to represent us, and I appreciate all the good work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay. Thank you all. So on the consent agenda, are there any items to be pulled? I would just ask that we pull, excuse me? Oh, I thought.
I'd like to look at this.
Bowch Tower lease.
Me too. Thank you. So we'll pull the Bowch Tower lease.
We can move it down to Reno.
Yep, we'll move it down to Reno. I think that's a good spot for it. Anything else from the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve it as amended? So moved. Thank you. Second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So since we moved that item down to item number six, Tim Nelson, you are up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. The item before you today is basically just a settlement agreement that was negotiated between our attorneys and regarding a, basically a lawsuit that was brought against us for the denial or partial denial of a variance that had been brought before the Board of Adjustment last month or the month before. It was last month. In any case, a little background on the situation is there was a sauna structure that had been built onto. And over the course of a property owner applying for a regular variance, it, upon review of the property, we noticed this structure that was, that had been built in nonconformance with the, with the standards. And basically, as a courtesy, when we do find something like that, we offer to add that onto a variance that had already been applied for, so we don't have to go through a redundant process. And in this case, that's what we did, is basically added the sauna structure onto the variance that had already been applied for. And over the course of the meeting, the original variance had been approved, but the sauna portion was not approved, was denied. And so the property owner filed suit against the Board of Adjustment, basically. And through discussions, we did concede that, you know, basically, yes, we can have add-ons to the variance process. But one thing in a technical nature that we didn't do is require that sauna structure to be added on in a specific application. So we had just dovetailed that into the original application without adding that to the application. So basically, the settlement agreement is the fact that we would vacate the denial of that specific sauna structure and allow the property owner to reapply specifically just for that structure. So it's basically erasing the decision, going back to square one on it and starting back over again.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Comments, questions? Tim, Commissioner Deschamps?
No.
Commissioner Burschine?
No.
Commissioner DeKerk?
Nope.
Commissioner Sterling?
I'm glad it's settled. It's always a little lesson to maybe review the beginnings of an application and just go back and revisit it. So that's what you did.
Motion to approve? Thank you. Second. Thank you. Are there any opposed? Does motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Brian?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to talk about replacing a 2005 Trailblazer for the zoning department. It's, that one has 100 and, where is that one? That one has 111,000 miles on it, and it needs about $4,000 worth of work. Transmission is giving us trouble. Front-end parts are shot, and the tires are shot. So usually, I try to keep them to right around 120,000 miles unless they start costing us a lot of money. And this one looks like it's going to cost us a bit of money. This one is about used, too, just so you know.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Okay. Commissioner Sterling, any questions or comments for Brian?
This page was an update from what our packet was?
Yes. I just added in the miles that we put on this year so far in eight months. You can see how much the cars get used.
Right. That's good, too. I've often wondered where, which departments had how many cars. And so this is, this is a good listing so that we can see, you know, probably zoning needs more car availability because of travel that they do around the county more than maybe radio management comparatively.
Right. And as you can see, some of these are getting up there in mileage. There's a few over 100,000 already, and, but they're 2001, 2002, so we have some older vehicles that'll probably be going out in the next couple of years.
And so there is money for this?
Yes, there is. There's about $160,000 in the car fund. So on the new car, I believe, is $21,000, maybe. Is that what I had already? I forgot to bring that.
Twenty-five, eight-seventy-four.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good for now, and then maybe in the future? Does the car fund ever grow?
Yes, it grows all the time. Whichever department uses it, there's, whatever mileage goes back into the car fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeKerk?
Looks like number six needs to, it's close there at 117. Or is that one just not giving you trouble?
That's not giving us any troubles. That's why I'm taking that one and replacing that with the 2002 that's in the Public Health Department. 2002 is getting rusted. It's given us a few repairs, and it's a little harder to get car seats in and out of for them. So we're going to take the one with more mileage and put in there, since it's been trouble-free so far.
Okay. Commissioner Burschine?
No comments.
Commissioner Deschamps?
Are you just putting the other one up for auction or trade?
Yes. No, I, they won't take them on trade because they give us a state contract account. So then we just put them up here in the lot and auction them off.
Sell some.
As is. Yep.
Great. Before we have a motion, I just, because we're going to be looking at our capital plan with the Highway Department, and I'm not against the purchase of this car, but I just would be really great, I think, and I'm sure you do this on an annual basis or a regular basis, just to review that, what your plan is for replacing vehicles at that 120, and just to become familiar with the research that you use to base that, those things on, would be good to do in the next year. It would be great. But it was really helpful to see the miles put on just this year and the miles that the cars have, because I think without seeing that, I really couldn't answer personally to the people that say those cars are just sitting in the parking lot. Obviously, looking at this, the cars are not just sitting in the parking lot. These cars are really being used a lot.
They are.
Well over 100,000 miles on a lot of these cars in one year. That's a lot of use.
Sixty-two thousand miles so far this year.
Yeah. So this, that was really helpful to see that.
Part of that is we have like six escapes, so they're out at different times, but it looks like there's an escape there all the time, because there are so many of them. But they're the most popular ones that we have.
And they're a pretty inexpensive car that has four-wheel drive, is that right, or all-wheel drive?
Right. And that's what people ask for most.
Yeah. In this country, it's pretty hard to get around without all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive.
So when the commissioner requests a car, we get one of the four trip cars? And Brian has had to gently, kindly ask for departments to cough up if I've needed a vehicle? So even with four cars that are free for the pick-in of not dedicated departments, we've run out. There are times when we, 16 isn't enough.
Yeah, it happens all the time.
And before I saw this mileage, I was thinking that it might be useful just to let people drive their own cars and compare that mileage with buying new cars. But once I've seen this mileage, that just makes no sense. This really helps me understand the whole, the whole fleet and why we need to replace cars and...
Also, when you look at the departments, considering the situations in which they enter properties, I don't feel comfortable sending our staff into private property with their personal vehicles.
Yeah, makes sense. It's good to have that logo vehicle, that professional face and... Okay. Motion to approve? Thank you. Do I hear second? Support? Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Reno. Good morning, Reno. Good morning. Madam Chair, Commissioners?
Well, I have a whole stack of things for this one.
We added one to your pile.
I saw that.
Yes, we did.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I have lots of time.
Yes, good, good, good.
So did you want to talk about the Bowch land lease?
Yeah, I was thinking, and I think just, it's really great when you have a conversation about one thing, that you have it in the context of the greater tower conversation. And I think you'd be really good describing the use, and particularly with this lease being a 10-year lease, it's just, would be helpful for me to understand what kind of space that tower is taking up and what opportunities are we reserving for that one customer.
So that, that particular tower is one of the smaller towers that's up there. Currently, at the top of it, T-Mobile is on that tower and is in an extended long lease in that tower. Right now, T-Mobile is the only tenant on that tower. This request is for about two feet of tower space, so a very small request, actually. We do have another pending request with WTIP to add to that tower as well for sort of redundant, a redundant loop on their, on their radio broadcasting that's on the bigger tower up there. So it's a tower that has space, not likely that cell service is going to, other cell service is going to ask for. In fact, the big tower that we built up there that has Verizon on it and WTIP on it was built specifically for cell service, and there's room for probably three more cell service providers on that bigger tower. We would even like T-Mobile to consider moving on to that tower. So this is a small tower that doesn't probably other, I mean, it didn't have anybody asking to be on it until WTIP requested to be on there as well. So this is a, it's a low priority for us when we did our request policy, and we had the order of things that we put on the towers. At the top, we have public safety, and at the very bottom, we had private businesses for kind of small, non-commercial things. And so this is at the bottom of our priority, but we have the space. We also have a way to get out of it if we need it. It says that in the contract, that we can end the lease if there's a higher priority public safety need to be on that tower.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions for Reno about the agenda item?
I just wanted to make sure that $300 a year was enough after our discussion last week about the towers.
It's, it's, it's not a lot of money, but it's also a very small use of the space for a private company. I don't know. That's what, what Rowan had talked to him about. I think it's, it's probably on the low end, but we wouldn't charge them, I don't think, the same as we would T-Mobile on there. We have a few more of these coming up, these either land lease kinds of things where it's a, a small business has a building on, on some of our land, and it's the same, it's going to be the same kind of an issue, how much do we charge them? We've got to continue to look at that. Try to enable businesses as much as we can, but on the other hand, make sure that we're taking care of ourselves. That's a good question.
Questions? I'll just go down the line. Commissioner Burschine, do you have any questions? Commissioner DeKerk? Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you. So the lease is for 10 years. If anything would happen to the equipment, who would kind of take care of that? Would they do that? You do that?
It's with, I think in the lease.
In the lease.
If there's an issue with their equipment, they would, they would repair it. They, they have to contact us. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stipulations. Do I, do I not have a copy of the lease in there somewhere?
Yes, I did.
This is our new standard lease that we did with buyers, so it has, I think it does a pretty good job of taking care of the county. And it, and it allows us to be able to take care of ourselves, too, and get out of these leases when, when we need them or something else.
So there's one article that it's quiet enjoyment. Does that mean that it won't make a lot of noise or humming or strobing lights?
You know, I, I would have the same question, but that's something all the lawyers want to seem to have put in there. So I think it just means that we're not going to put other things, liens and covenants and a lot of other things that I just, this is kind of the agreement. But I, I would defer to Molly on explaining quiet enjoyment. I'm not sure.
Well, this would be, isn't it out in the woods somewhere, the tower?
No, it's, it's up here over Grand Marais.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the, it's one of the smaller towers up over Grand Marais. So it's less quiet enjoyment than, say, you know, somewhere in the woods.
Okay, thank you. So my question would be, this lease is for 10 years, and you said we could get out of it, or there's language?
If we had a higher priority, public safety need.
Okay.
We, we could, I think the... So it's less quiet enjoyment than say, you know, somewhere in the woods.
Okay, thank you.
So my question would be, this lease is for ten years and you said we could get out of it or there's language?
If we had a higher priority, public safety need.
Okay.
We, we could, I think the lease, and I don't, I wasn't expecting to talk about this lease, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. It, I think it says that we can get out of it if we identified a higher public safety need, like if our paging equipment needs to go on there, for example. But that we would work with them to find another tower location for them.
Got it, got it. And then the grand scheme of things, two feet is not, is way less than.
Yeah, it's a hundred-foot tower.
Need.
Cell service takes up about twenty feet usually, and this is two feet.
So it just triggered me that this is a ten-year lease and we're really starting to talk about self, or not self policies, but our tower policies. And it'd be a good time to think in terms of future requests and what kind of fee is fair and, and all of that. So it just kind of triggered that whole conversation.
And, and Madam Chair, all of these contracts that we're bringing forward on the tower tend to be twenty, twenty-five-year leases. So it's a very, it's a very important point. You know, and as you probably know, we have many relationships with our towers that aren't covered by contracts at all. So we're systematically trying to go back and right that ship. For, for revenue, yes, but also for the fact that we don't have any understanding of when somebody should be removed or what liability is, or, you know, even process about making changes to that equipment that's up there. So this is kind of one, a small one. And hopefully, we're going to, you know, keep bringing those forward and addressing them.
Right.
But you're right, they, they are for a long time.
Right.
But they have been, many of them for a long time, without any revenue to the county or any relationship or acknowledgement of, you know, roles and responsibilities, so.
So this is an improvement over the past.
And I think this is a good contract. It's a contract that favors accounting. It's the lease that we specifically worked with buyers and Molly to create.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? And we'll just make a motion to that one item. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, now you get to the item on your list.
Thank you. I'm going to maybe suggest slightly different order than we've got there so that like things can be put together. I'd like to talk about the strategic plan first. Back on June thirteenth, Valerie and I came and asked the board if you would approve a strategic plan framework that the Communication Committee had put together as a result of the Commissioner's strategic planning effort, the MAT team's strategic planning, and then four employee sessions to discuss that and give a feedback. And we had done, put together, you know, a plan the best we could, taking all of that input. At that time, you asked us to put that on hold, that decision on hold, because it was Commissioner Duchesne's first board meeting, which I thought was a completely reasonable request. So after that, I think in July, we came back to the committee of the whole and brought that back to the group of commissioners again to look at it, go through it again, discuss it. There were not any issues at that time. Couple of weeks later, we took it to the MAT team. And I guess MAT team is redundant. We took it to the MAT and, and had the same conversation with them. And again, there were not any significant issues or changes that we noted. And then a couple of weeks ago, we had four different employee sessions where we had employees come back in again. We went through how we had gotten to the words that were there. And then we gave them an opportunity to weigh on each part of it and also talk about other aspects of it, like how, you know, how they thought that this mission would help them improve the way they do their job or, you know, questions like that. So as a result of that, what we found was that the mission statement, which I think you have in your packets, right? The mission statement, which is supporting, supporting community through quality public service, was widely accepted. Employees seemed to like that. They thought it was simple, to the point, resonated. We're good with mission. We found that vision, although they could, they could see how we came up with it based on comments, still was not resonating. And, and it just, it just didn't quite do it for them. And I, I think it's really important that the vision resonate with people, that they can see the future, that they can see what they're trying to get to as they do their work, as they do a project. They can see how this improves the future of county government. So I just want to hold that thought for a second. Vision, still needs some work. Close, but no cigar, as they would say. Values, they liked the values, they voted on the values. The listed values was the same. But we had had, when we allowed them to vote, we had sometimes synonyms, words that were very close, like ethics and ethical. And so they, the words that we had, they wanted a couple of them replaced. So in the first version, we had ethics, accountability, fairness, collaboration, and respect. And they ask, and it was, there was a lot of, across the sessions, different people saying that they really wanted to use the word integrity rather than ethics and equity rather than fairness. So when I read those words, I like the way they sound. I think they, they resonate well. And they mean similar things. Employees seem to like this list better. So we're making the suggestion to change those, those words. And last are the pillars, which of course is like the framework that we're going to tie all of these projects and our strategic initiatives to. And the pillars are communication, service delivery, operations, innovation, and workforce. And they thought that those resonated very well with the, the projects and the operational work they did. So in summary, sort of what we're requesting today is that we go ahead and approve the framework, but without the vision. We, we approve the mission, the values, the pillars at this time. And then in the next steps of this process is as the Communication Committee starts meeting with departments to develop their individual departmental strategies, that we, we incorporate a vision discussion in those meetings as well and see if we can't see a collective vision emerge from that, that people feel comfortable with. See, see the reasons why people do those projects if that informs a vision for us, if that helps us do that. So what we're asking today is, is that we go ahead, that you go ahead and approve this framework without the vision so that we can keep the process moving forward. That's it, I guess. So any questions? I'm happy to take them and...
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I could. In, in the conversation, the last conversation we had, summarizing the work to date, the latest employee sessions that members of the Communication Committee held with staff. And the amount of time we spend talking about how do we prioritize our resources? How do we make sure we're doing the right things and not doing the wrong things? We really need to move forward with the, with the strategic plan development. And we really need to be moving forward with involving the staff in this conversation. And, and it just kind of came out of that conversation that we can, we can leave the vision aside. We can adopt the mission. We can start using the mission statement. And we can start going forward and having the rest of these conversations. And I'd be willing to bet that a vision is going to pop out of those sessions just, at some point along the line, some, the light bulb's going to go off and somebody says, "That makes sense. That's what, that's what we're trying to do." When we're looking ahead, three to five years, that's what we're trying to do. And it, and I think it's critical that we, that we support this now so that we can go forward with the rest of those sessions and we can get to work with the employees at the level of the work that they're doing with the public.
Great. Questions, comments? Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comment is move forward, yes. And like I am hearing, things can come out of that and a little bit more depth and really concentrating on what the vision is, and I think it will come. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
I'm really trying to not go into lecture mode here. When I started as Commissioner, we had just celebrated a hundred years of county government in Cook County. We had no administrator, we had no direction. We had departments working on their own. Public health had a mission and a vision, but the rest of you were all doing your own thing, on your own agenda, serving the public. And to hear that you all sit down together and basically in four separate sessions, you have similar conversations. So now we're turning the ship, we're working together, we're all seeing the vision for not only in your jobs, in your offices, in Cook County, but how you're going to serve the people of this county and how you're going to do it together. And we did all of this without adding staff. We did it with what we have. And that's what we have continued to do over and over again, is get asked to do things and we just keep doing it. And we don't build the community for the services that we have continued to add. And so when someone says, "Well, eighty percent of what you do is mandated and the other twenty percent, why don't you just get rid of it?" This is my twenty percent. These are my people that are doing the work that we need to do so we can go in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry you have to go after me, Myron.
Oh, thank you. That was well done. Well, I, I have commented on this before and I really appreciate, you know, where we're at with this and revisiting the, the vision. I've been around a long time and been through these things in many organizations. And I had some issue with delivering a high quality of life. I, I just don't know what that means. I'm sort of behavioral in a way. I, you know, so, thank you. I think, I agree with that a lot. I really like a one-of-a-kind place. I think that's, that's really creative and, and fitting with the logo and everything. So, yeah, I, I appreciate where you're at with this, but support all the other work. And I think the process of going forward is to work on this vision. If you ever look for ideas, you can talk to me. But I, I'm not saying that I should, you know, have any influence on that at all. But, but I, I appreciate bringing this forward with, you know, the need for more work when it's needed. So thank you. And thank everyone for their input on this. And I'm one that takes these types of things seriously. In whatever position I have, I walk the talk. Excuse me.
Perfect! That was perfect. You didn't even ask her to speak.
I don't know what happened there. I didn't program that. Wow! That's genie, not Siri. So enough said. Thank you for all your work on this and thanks to everyone. And I know that this makes a difference in organizations. I've seen it over my years and many years of public service, so, good way to go. And I really appreciate, you know, just being honest with, this isn't quite where we want it to be yet. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Duchesne?
Oh, looks good. Changed quite a bit since the first time I seen it.
Thank you. It's hard, it's hard for me to approve this without a vision. But I understand that it's not without a vision, it's because we want the best vision. We're approving this with the thought that we will get the best vision, not that we won't have a vision. So, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Great work.
Thank you. I think it's important that we have that, that much of the framework and that we can continue to move ahead and keep the conversation going and not get into a back-and-forth and wordsmithing. I think, I think it will evolve. I feel confident about that. I have three more items and they all have this in common. They all are time-sensitive. They all need to happen, basically, and I'll give you the reasons for that before the end of this month. They are all in the final stages of contract language back and forth. And because they all need to be done by the end of this month, my fear is that by the time I could get them back onto the Commissioner's agenda, we would be past the end of the month. We would be into the October tenth meeting. So after discussing this with Molly, she said that what we could do was bring, bring the agreements as they are to you now with the understanding that they're going to continue to be negotiated for the next few days, that before anybody approves them, Molly would approve them, would review them and approve them. And so what I'm basically going to be asking for in all three of them is approval to delegate the signatory authority for each of these items to Brady Powers, the county auditor and treasurer. Because bringing them back on the tenth of October is, in each case, is too late for a variety of reasons. So I just wanted to say that each one of these requests has that request in it. But I want to go through what it is that you are in detail on each one of them, what it is that you're giving Brady the authority to sign, because you may object to that. But if you agree with the theory of this, then, and trust that Molly and myself and others will get to a good contract, then we can have Brady sign those in a timely way. So, is that, anybody? This is new for me, so I just want to make sure everybody understands what I'm asking for. Okay. The first one, I'm going to take on pictometry first because the other two are related. Kyle, very, and Kyle is here, I think he's here. I'm going to bring him up to talk a little bit about pictometry. But pictometry is, we talked about it a little bit last week when, or I think the previous meeting when we talked about hosting our pictometry. And the, the map that's in the back shows the planned flight coming up. It's just something that the county has paid for in the past. It's what gives us, when you go to our mapping solution and you can drill down and you can see your house on the property, when you can, when you see those, that photographic material, that's what we're getting as a result of this. It's widely used by real estate agents and citizens and pretty much every one of our departments to carry out their work. And, but it's also used by many of our other partners. It's used by folks at Graham Portage and it's used by the Forest Service and it's used by the DNR and it's used by a lot of other people as well. And, and so it gets out of date. The last time that it was done was six or coming on seven years ago. And a lot of changes happened. New roads appear and new buildings appear and different things are cleared. So we, it's something you have to continue to do. The difference this time is that Kyle has been doing a really, really good job of help getting our partners interested in helping us pay for it. Last time we spent, was it three hundred thousand dollars, maybe?
It was under that, but it was maybe...
It was close to that. And we did it ourselves, but everybody else benefits from that. So he's been out kind of beating the bushes and talking to the city of Graham Ray and to the Forest Service and to folks at Portage and other, other people, other partners, and trying to get them to help pay for this this time. So this is the first, I think, service agreement that we're trying to put forward. It's with the Forest Service. And the Forest Service is, so far, and the price has been going up, is offering to pay up to a hundred and twenty-four thousand of that. And they're finding that money out of this year's budget. The federal budget, the federal fiscal year changes, it ends the end of September. So in order to use the money that they're putting on the table, we have to sign this agreement by the thirtieth. Even though we don't have a specific project or funding in place, you know, to, to do, to do that next year, the agreement itself gives us the ability to get out of it if we don't have funding. But it's important that we sign this by the thirtieth or else we lose the opportunity to use that money that the Forest Service has found for us. Hence the signatory authority to get that done. Kyle, have you got anything you want to add to that?
If I have anything to add, I can certainly answer any other questions.
Do you want to answer the microphone?
Like, like Rena said, and we've, we use this on a daily basis and most of our county departments benefit as well as area businesses. And we've, like, like a number of counties in the state of Minnesota, we've contracted with pictometry for multiple flights. They're easy company to work with. We first flew the county in two thousand nine and again in two thousand twelve. And we're hearing from, from our end-users and all our land records departments, transportation, public safety, we're, we're ready to, to refresh that. So like Rena said, we can get, get... So, like Rena said, we can get caught up on those changes of the landscape and then also have the ability to track those changes back through time. So, we are in the process of negotiating the contract with pictometry to fly this coming spring for another round of updated imagery.
Thank you. So, question?
Yeah, Madam Chair Commissioners, so where's the rest of the money coming from? The rest of the money is not in the operational budget for next year.
The intent is to bundle the cost of doing this into our bonding for later this year and next year, and we're looking specifically for the authority to let us do that, but that's, it's not shown in an operational budget with levy impact in 2018. It's being shown as part of financing for the other capital things that we need to do in, over the next eighteen months. So, you'll be seeing that list coming up in October, as we'll be looking for a resolution authorizing bonding for this set of projects that we've been discussing. The windows, the roof, that list, this is on that list.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Questions, comments? Commissioner Sterling? Thank you. So you mentioned that the forestry would be doing $140,000, $124,000 toward it?
Plus or minus, that's about the figure you were able to allocate.
You think that would be our amount, or equal, or more?
Per the agreement with the Forest Service, the county would match that at fifty percent, and what that does is give us kind of a baseline coverage. We're talking about covering more area than we've covered in the past. We want to cover the entire county, less the wilderness. It's a little bit difficult to look at, but that map that we referenced earlier shows what we've covered in various colors in 2012, and so there's some holes in there. And in order for the Forest Service to be interested in cost sharing on this flight, they're looking at using the imagery largely for timber management and that kind of thing. And so it's really critical that we, as a baseline collection, cover that broad area. Now, depending on available county funds and additional partnerships, we stand to decide if we want to buy up to a higher resolution imagery in certain targeted areas. We've done that before in the past. That's what you're seeing the different colors for on the map behind you. Pictometry has various products available, a different resolution, and each of those comes with a greater cost as you move up in resolution. So, again, depending on available funds and other partnerships, we may buy up in addition to that baseline.
This would be something, then, you would look at in the future, whether to upgrade, shall we say, or, but this money that they have and that we would match would get it off the, basically off the ground?
Right. We, well, we have until early part of December to enter into a contract with pictometry if we, looking at a spring 2018 flight. So, we have, that's our window to see who's on board, what the funding sources are, and what everyone's interest is in terms of product and coverage.
So, this would, that would give you time, then, to go around, like you have, to the different groups, city and other organizations, to have them come aboard also?
Yes. I think this would be the first of several agreements that you will probably see, and eventually we'll have to come to you for a funding request as well, of where we would see that being paid for. But the reason this one's coming now is just about the federal deadline for their budget year. Otherwise, they would probably come together.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
It'd be kind of interesting to take a video section from nine to when this gets finished, just to prove the point that we're not growing. You know, our population is the same, but I know that there's been a lot of changes even in eight years, and it'd be kind of cool to see how we've changed, I mean, not just the fact that trees grow.
Right. In fact, that's one of the applications we look at building into our, as we further develop our web GIS implementation. There's a, we have the ability to kind of split your map screen and look at that before and after, cycle through those years to see the change, change in the landscape.
That may be a good thing for us to use at the airport when we're looking at our runway and how things are developing and where we've got to mitigate obstacles.
Sure. Great example.
Commissioner Burschain?
Well, I definitely support what you're proposing. It's taking advantage of an opportunity and acting now, so I have no problem giving authority to Mr. Powers to come to agreement with this. It's a smart move.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Yeah, no, that's good. Where are you dealing with? Tim Miller came down for our representative of the forestry division for a meeting that we hosted here, oh, last month, I think. And we've, yeah, we've had a few conversations about coverage and level of detail, and so we'll continue to work with him and whoever else at Graham Portage to hopefully arrange agreement. Yeah, I want to get ahold of April for our moves in real... Sure. Well, and I have spoken to April though as well, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I, this sounds like a great opportunity and visual, visual, being able to visualize the actual landscape, and particularly the before and after, is an extremely powerful tool. And the potential for other opportunities for use of this project will be readily sought after, I'm sure.
So, motion to delegate signatory authority to Brady for cost-sharing agreement.
Thank you. Support. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would just like to add for the record that this all moves forward because of Kyle's good work and the relationships he has with all of our partners. So, thank you, Kyle.
They make it easy to work with.
Thank you, Kyle. I mean, thank you, I mean, that you've gone and gotten this contract, this opposed to...
It's definitely the extra mile.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. So, I have two agreements that kind of are connected at the hip, and I'm going to try and explain it, and then we'll take them separately. This is something we've been talking about for a long time. This is cell service on the Hovland Tower. Both of these relate to that. We know how significant that is to the residents that live there. And the timeliness that I'm trying to move this forward with is all about this year's construction season and trying to make this happen before winter comes, and it's another year before they can get cell service up there. The part of this, it's been complex for us all along, is that the tower, although we own the tower, it's on DNR land, and it's in the middle of an area of great sensitivity to the DNR. It's a, if you've ever been up there, it's actually a very beautiful road. It's a maple forest, and it's a scientific area that's very preserved and very special to the DNR. But at the knob, at the top of that, right in the middle of that, sits our communication tower. We have an existing lease with the DNR, which is set to expire in about a year and a half. That lease, I don't, I guess it's almost ten years old. It's probably eight years old. The cell service providers, Verizon and T-Mobile, who have requested to be on there, are not very comfortable with the short-term fact that that lease would be expiring a year and a half without any guarantees that we would come to agreement on another one. So, we, early in this process, last spring, started talking to the DNR about revamping that lease and getting it another ten years out with extensions in there. So, the DNR had, has a lot of changes that they had, and so it's just been a very time-consuming process. They sent us a lease a few weeks ago, and we had some changes in it that we requested. I had a conversation yesterday with the person at Lander Minerals, Lander Minerals, somebody at the DNR that's in charge of this contract, and discussing the things that we wanted to see changed in the lease that they proposed. And I think they're going to make those changes, maybe not one of them, but we can live with the one they're not going to make. Anyway, they're trying to get that through their attorney and back to us this week to get it signed. If, it needs to be signed before the T-Mobile one can be signed. I already have a copy of the T-Mobile lease, it's already been reviewed, but I can't sign that one until this one is signed. And T-Mobile is saying, if these aren't done by September thirtieth, we can't, we don't have enough time to move forward with cell service this year. That's the timeliness factor with the two of these. Is that clear? It's kind of salat, it's like a soap opera, it's salat, back and forth. But, so, I'm pretty confident, as confident as I can be with the DNR and doing a lease with them, that they're going to get that lease back to us this week or early next week in time for it to be signed, so that we can move ahead with the T-Mobile one. I've already placed a two-week notification into the DNR, which they've accepted, for them to be able to begin construction that first week of October. So, we're just finishing this up. So, again, the request is about signatory authority to Brady in the next week or so to, when these get finalized. Molly will have the final review on them, and Rowan, and I will also be reviewing them. So, the first one, let's see, which one have I got here? It's the DNR lease, is a request to approve delegatory, signatory authority to, delegating signatory authority to Brady Powers for this lease, LM1S-000541, State of Minnesota's Department of Natural Resources. The lease covers the area where the Hovland Tower is located. The term of the lease is ten years. The lease fee is $28,480.23 for ten years, or payable in annual installments, of the first year being $2,601. So, one thing I did not mention, the current lease is for $500 a year. This is an increase, it's a big increase, obviously, but it's significantly different than what the DNR asked for, which was half of any revenue we got on the tower, plus a charge for each antenna. So, plus this amount. So, we said, you know, come on, we have to be able to support the tower, and I think probably in the future they will ask for any additional cell service that goes on these. But this particular contract specifies that this is the rate even when we add T-Mobile and Verizon. So, that's why. That money wasn't fully budgeted this year, but it is already in my budget for next year, and we'll find it, that $1,500 or whatever, $2,000 in my budget this year. So, that's the request for the DNR lease. Question?
Commissioner DeShaw?
No.
Commissioner Burschain?
Commissioner DuKirk?
When Rena says "find it," it doesn't mean she's hiding anything. It means that we have income coming in, and we'll make it work until next year.
Yes, we've already started getting income on these things, yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Sterling? No questions?
Okay. I mean, this seems like a great improvement as well, and helps us move forward with getting revenue and cell service. So, it's kind of a win-win-win-win. Thank you.
So, do I hear a motion? So moved. Thank you. Do I hear a second? Support. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, just to add on to that, the next item is the lease with T-Mobile, which, again, I'm requesting delegating signatory authority to Brady Powers for the agreement to be signed. We have the contracts, already been approved by Molly. As soon as the DNR one is done, then we can sign this one. And you're exactly right, this is the most fun kind of thing to bring, because it brings $11,400 annually to the county, and for 25 years, and each year it's three percent increase. We've negotiated that in. So, every year, that amount was up, compounds three, three percent. And it provides really important and critical services to people up there who've been looking for them for some time. It's the best kind of thing to bring here, I think. I am asking that these new funds, that we continue to put them into the radio communication capital fund, so that we have an ability to do some of the operational things that we haven't been doing to take care of our towers.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Sterling? Questions or comments? Thank you. Only comment is, gee whiz, when I get up there, I don't get any service, because I have Verizon.
They're coming next year.
Oh, yay! Okay. All the way to the border, then, huh?
Verizon has requested to be on the Graham Portage Info Tower and on the Hovland Tower, but those are both on Verizon's schedule for 2018. And this DNR lease is very critical to Verizon as well. They're named in the lease as well.
Could you work on the West End?
Sure.
I mean, you know, on Top Gear, you get out of the middle of '61, you get any service, you know, Verizon, so. It's back and forth with the townships, too, and one is one place and one's the other place, and they're just not workable right now, I guess. Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
Just a reminder, we cannot solicit bunders. They have to come to us, so Ginny.
Oh, I know.
You can, you can get anyone to come to us. We can put the word out. And then, just a reminder, the armor towers for new commissioners have a lifespan of about ten years, and they came with no funding to fix them or repair them or maintain them or keep them going.
Actually, the armor towers that we own, we think our life expectancy on there is about 50 years.
Fifty years?
That's what we're budgeting for.
That's better than what we hear at conferences, because they're all asking for more money for their towers, so it's nice to know that we're taking care of our own towers and finding ways to generate revenue and increase communication. So, thank you again to your office, that again isn't growing in size, to take care of all these issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Burschain?
Thanks for your work, and definitely support this.
Thank you. Commissioner DeShaw?
Yeah, that's one of the questions I get from the Hovland people, is when they're going to get cell phone service.
Well, if everything goes well in the next week, they should have it before the snow flies.
Well, that could be like in a week.
All right, maybe I should, maybe I should just change that. We're going to try and have it before the snow flies.
It typically flies.
Before the end of the year, before the end of the year.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to authorize Mr. Powers to go into an agreement with T-Mobile on this, and the DNR, I guess, yeah.
DNR was the last one? This is a, great. Thank you. Any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's on. Yeah. Thank you, thank you. A lot of good work there. All right. Okay, we are really close to on schedule. Yes, so, we could, so let's, are there any commissioner concerns? Commissioner DuKirk?
I'd just like to talk about our AMC that we were at last week. Commissioner Severson and I sat down with a commissioner and a community roughly our size, who doesn't have an administrator, doesn't have HR, doesn't have a strategic plan, has one commissioner that micromanages everything and runs the show, it sounds like, and if they were to levy their taxpayers for their current budget, it would be 39% increase, roughly. They lost some funding and some things that they had going on, so it was interesting to listen to this commissioner, and it sounds like they're discussing obliterating their fund balance to not raise their levy more than, did he say five percent?
Yeah, something, kind of.
Yeah. And so, he actually begged for Jan and I to come to his county and talk to his commissioners, and we're like, eh, no. You guys are going to have to figure it out. But that was an interesting thing, to sit and hear another... But that was an interesting thing, to sit and hear another county, and, you know, when we talk and we go around the room and they say, what's your levy going to be, what's your levy going to be? And honestly, you know, in some communities, a 3% levy is a million dollars. You just can't, not until you hear, hear the whole story. So, it's when we have these interactions in between meetings that you sit down and talk to a commissioner and, and find out, what does that mean for you to have a 39% increase? What does it mean for your staff? And so, it's, it's interesting.
Yes, we do get a lot of questions from counties that are in bad shape.
Yeah.
So, and you do gain in your context of the whole state versus our specific county and our specific issues. So, it's a really good activity to be involved in, particularly the Association of Minnesota Counties. They offer so many good educational opportunities as well, that I can't imagine doing this work without having those opportunities to learn from and to share with the other commissioners.
And in our, in the General Committee, I'm on, Hennepin County created a tool that Jeff has that we hope to be able to put out before Truth and Taxation, that says, where does your money go? We've been talking about this for years, you know, how much of your money is used for this, that, and the other thing, maybe I really, don't think I brought it with me, but they have a little brochure kind of, that they put out, where's your taxpayer money go, and it's pretty cool.
One interesting county did, too.
Yeah.
She gave me a copy of that. Put something together, you know, do some graphs and charts, and I think that speaks more than maybe a lot of words.
Yeah.
They can see where things are going.
Yep.
And numbers.
Yeah, yeah. Other commissioner reports? Any other impressions of the, yes, Commissioner DeShaw?
Yes, I would like to comment. One thing that happened to me at the conference, and there was certain events and information that preceded that, but especially when I listened to our NACO representative speaking about the federal issues and how our people might be, and I, I've sort of changed my thinking about how we're going to approach the budget, and we'll talk more about that this afternoon. But I would like to just mention at the time, the importance that we, we face now at the federal level with the vulnerability of Cook County dealing with our federal funding. We're, we're extremely vulnerable. So, I've changed some of my thinking about how we should go ahead in the budget process in regards to, you know, a three-year plan, still having a three-year plan, but looking at, I think we need to make some decisions in cleaning up our balance deficit more in the first year. So, and I'm bringing that up now, just because it seemed to be the conference that affected me a lot in changing my thinking about the three-year spread. So, with that, I just would like to mention that.
Great, thank you. Any other impressions from the AMC?
This was my first, first one to go to, and I went to some pretty interesting, the Indian Affairs thing, and talked about opioid abuse there, and then we went to the transportation one, and then that employee workforce deal there. So, it was, it was a good conference.
So, if I could just ask Commissioner DeShaw, had you, the person who spoke about, from Carlton County, had you met him before or seen him speak before about that program?
No, I haven't. But I did bring that information back to.
Yeah, seemed like they had a really excellent, oh, actually, this one from Car, he was from Fond du Lac.
Fond du Lac.
Yeah, excellent.
Looks like they have a pretty good model.
Yeah.
That they got going there, and it's definitely a problem that needs to be addressed, if you heard. And I guess, Jane said the number is the 10,000 kids that are being affected.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my futures next week is about opioids and addiction and the effects on county government when I go to Futures, so I'll keep you in mind when I'm down there.
Yeah, and it's interesting that, how that, that conversation is growing from prescription drugs to heroin. I mean, it's just, it's all the same conversation, but in some communities it's heroin, in other communities it's prescription drugs. I'm not sure what our community here is, but it's really good to go to these conferences and hear that there are good models out there that work toward preventing, and they're holistic. The, the approach at Fond du Lac was really a long-range investment in every person that goes through the program, so that they, the recipitism, I can't say that word, is extremely low after this program, after you've been in this program for a while. So, it was very effective.
Yeah, I just remember him being, housing is not the solution.
Yes.
That stuck with me, and, and other commissioners in other counties that are building affordable housing, they're like, you're not dealing with the addiction, you're dealing with housing.
Addiction, yeah.
Addiction first.
Yeah, that was a really interesting part, yeah.
Last night on the national news, they went to Columbus, Ohio, where I was at the NACO conference, and just, you know, interviewed a family that was affected by this, and the dad was getting out of prison, and what he would be looking at in that particular county programs that were now building and being able to serve the people who need the programs, and the effect on the family, and the grandmother taking care of the children, and then that whole thing. But I thought that was interesting that they were in Columbus, because it's hard hit, that part of Ohio.
Great. So, the commissioner who will be on WTIIP will be me, not Commissioner DeKirk. Do we have a new schedule?
We'll get one.
Yes. And, unless we want to get into the budget conversation right now, it makes sense that we recess and come back.
Madam Chair, we could take items nine A, B, and C.
Oh, great, let's do that.
Before the meeting.
Perfect. Yes.
And if you would allow me, I have a couple of administrative updates that I'd like to start with.
That sounds great.
So, the first administrative updates, which unfortunately I didn't get on here, so I'm not going to ask you to do anything, I just, I'm asking for direction. The first one is, working with LHB, the design company that's going to be designing the County Road 42 through 45 project, is narrowing in on an open house to have a conversation about the scope and the scale and the timeline and, and what's all involved in that process. And they're looking at October 10th, probably from 5:00 to 7:00 with an open house and a short presentation. That's a Tuesday night. I, I ran the dates by some people to look at the schedule. They gave me five dates, and I eliminated two of them, because we have major community events coming up that would, would have interfered with that. But now they're saying from their selections, they're asking if October 10th would be a good date to have that first conversation. They're wondering if we have time to get that information out. That's four weeks out from today, so I think we've got, I think it's.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yeah, three.
Still time to get the notice out.
Yep.
And, so I think that we will schedule that for October, October 10th.
Will the, will that stand since?
No, we'd have it here.
Here, okay.
Have to make sure that we get it out for those folks that are.
Yeah, I've already been kind of informing people when they ask about it. And people are anxious.
People have been asking, people are anxious, people want to know what the process is. And, and I said, the process is, is that the first thing we're going to do is have a public meeting and ask you what you want.
Yeah.
And, and so we need to have that.
They're going to be really happy.
We need to have that meeting.
That's great.
The second item that's not on here, and we're not actually asking for action on, is the Personnel Committee heard a, a job review on, on Holly Schroeder's position in the Recorder's Office, and we realized through this, through the classification study, that her position has probably been misclassified for a number of years. And, and when you think about the context of if Dusty Elms is not in the office, then Holly's expected to act as the recorder. And when we looked at her job description at the Personnel Committee meeting this last week, we realized that the classification recommendation through the comp study on this position was a significant change. Almost everything else in our organization mapped to something that we anticipated. This one position stands out as something that we probably hadn't gotten right to this point. So, at the Personnel Committee meeting, they voted to recommend using the old classification system, that we reclassify this position. But our policies don't really have a way for us to address this issue. And so, I'm asking for guidance, if we would, if we would put this on the agenda for next week for the board, just to take action, knowing that it's outside of the policies that we have, but it's consistent with the compensation study, it's consistent with the conversation that we had at the Personnel Committee meeting, and, and we would ask the board to take action on this, essentially as an exception to a policy that doesn't address this particular circumstance. And if that's okay, then I'll just put it on the agenda for next week.
Great, thank you. Ask for input, Commissioner DeShaw, any questions or comments on that issue? Commissioner DeShaw? Commissioner DeKirk? Commissioner Sterling? So, does that mean we're, if there's no comment, does that mean we're good?
That means that I'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Excellent, okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then, then item 9A was submitted by Attorney Hickon, and she's not able to be here. Basically, it's to contract for prosecution services due to the lack of, of having a, an assistant county attorney. They will be interviewing for that position next week, but in the meantime, she's got money in her budget to, to do this. We know that at times we have to hire professional staff to meet caseload. So, this, there's very, very little in here, other than acknowledging that we're going to give her consent to be able to do that.
Great. Commissioner Sterling, any comments or questions on that?
Comments, yes, go ahead and, and do that until someone would be selected.
Okay. Commissioner DeKirk, no questions. Commissioner DeShaw?
Wise move.
Commissioner DeShaw?
So, the cap doesn't have a $10,000?
I think the cap is related to her budget line item, so, yes.
Okay. So, a cap of $10,000. So, do I hear a motion to approve? So moved. Thank you. Second?
Support.
Thank you. Any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, item 9B, we covered last week, but as part of our policy of not trying to make decisions the first time that you see something.
Yeah.
I didn't ask for a vote in support of this resolution at our last meeting, and that's what we're asking for, is a, is a resolution saying that we support this initiative, per the request of Jim Boyd.
Great. And the initiative is all around?
Supporting the visa program.
Yeah, supporting the visa program, yes, excellent. Commissioner DeShaw, any comments, questions about this resolution?
We need those employees in the.
I support.
Commissioner DeKirk, no questions. Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I attended that meeting, I have two pages of notes. But one thing that I did ask, because we have so much data, we have an older population, and we have a diminishing population, and does that make a difference? And the two lawyers who work on immigration said, no, it's all about seasonal work. That's the only thing that runs it. So, there has been a committee formed, and they're going to look into possibly saying to folks in another area of Minnesota, when your summer work is over, and they're here for a year, maybe you'd like to come and work on the North Shore with the ski business. So, there's going to be some looking into transferring of some groups of people up here to trade off, so they can finish their year of work. So, that was the outcome of.
It was great. So, some coordination of coordination.
Efforts to make the most of that program.
Yeah, that's great.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any opposed?
Madam Chair, so is this approving that?
Resolution.
There's a resolution format in there?
Yes, good question. Yes. The format is in here. Yes, they're, all the whereas is in there, yes. Okay. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And item C, 9C, Madam Chair, is the International Day of Peace Initiative, and again, we talked about this last week. But part of the request is, is to authorize the resolution in support of that initiative, and to have somebody from the board available during that event Thursday night at 7:00 PM to read the county's resolution.
Okay. So, as I go through the line, perhaps one of us or you will volunteer to be that person. So, I will start with Commissioner Sterling. Well, yes, I'm all for peace, but I'm not available. Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner DeKirk?
And I think last year, we were all at our AMC meeting when this happened, so we didn't have anyone the year before I was there. And I will be at AMC in Chesapeake when this is happening, so I will miss it again. But yes, just like Commissioner Sterling, I support peace. That's why I have my no hate tag on today.
Thank you. Commissioner DeShaw?
Definitely I support it, and I, I would be there, because usually I play the guitar and sing. And I committed to go to the airport Advisory Committee meeting, because I, Commissioner DeKirk is going to be gone, and I'm the alternate, and that's an important meeting to have a commissioner at. So, I'm sorry, I can't be there, and I wish I was, but county business comes first, I guess. But if I'd have known about that, maybe I'd have had a good excuse to go about having someone there. But I'm sorry, I can't. I've made my commitments.
Thank you. Commissioner DeShaw?
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you. Thursday, the 21st, I think I could do it, because I'm the only one that could do it. So, I volunteer.
Great teamwork.
Thank you. Okay, to read the resolution.
Yep.
But we, before we, before I read the resolution there, we need to approve the resolution to be read there.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the resolution to be read at International Day of Peace, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So, those are the three items that we wanted to accomplish before break, and, so we will break and be back for the EDA budget review, our budget discussion, and we will set the preliminary levy before we adjourn today. So, right now, we're just recessing, and we will be back at 1:00.
1:00.
1:00. Do we want to come back before 1:00? Okay, 1:00. So, we will be back at 1:00. Thank you. Okay.
You're not listening? Hello?
Okay, we're, we're back from recess, the regular meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners, and the first thing on our agenda right now is a presentation on the EDA budget, a review of the EDA budget.
Madam Chair, do you want me to walk through this?
Yeah.
Or summarize, or?
Um, yes.
And, and. If I may clarify, you all have this in your packet?
Yes, I think we have the same piece of paper in the packet. And maybe, yes, summarize, review, because we don't look at this except for once a year.
Should look at it more often.
We should look at it more often, but at least to make decisions. And, and particularly highlight changes, I guess that would be sort of our, that our theme, is to really highlight the changes.
So, if you look at the.
I should come up to the light, too.
Yes. Yeah, you can have.
If you look at the two columns to the right, I'll talk about the '17 budget in connection with the '18 request.
Great.
So, right away, let's focus on this. The budget request is down.
Okay, yes.
Waiting for applause.
Because, because it does not include the Cedar Grove.
Cedar Grove is the $60,000 that the county laterals to us for reasons that escaped me and goes on to the city. And it's been true for some time, and we weren't part of that contract, but we received, turn it over to the city. The Spectrum IRRB grant has not been applied for. We are led to believe that when and if that happens, it will be granted, but until it happens, we'll just put it in there as a placeholder. Just be aware that we expect that to be rolled in during 2018, and that's about a $5 million project, and a lot of taxes with it. In the left column, you see the County Housing Grant of $100,000. You see the Airport Terminal Grant, and I defer to Mary, is that? You see the Airport Terminal Grant, and I defer to Mary, is that, has that, any of that been recovered yet?
The invoices have been submitted for the airport building. I've not yet received the payment.
The Superior National Grant came in and has been paid to the contractors. The SBDC, the contract that we have with UND is the same as last year, and no change in the item below that, so overall, the total dollars in is about $740 compared to a little over a million last year, but those were outside the county mostly. Down below, I won't go through the operating side because those are straightforward, pretty predictable numbers. Let me go down to the project side, because that's likely where you'll have questions. Superior Cycling Association, we have a new line item there, $25,000, and I defer to the young men in the back here to address that question, if there are questions. You see the Spectrum Grant, if it comes in from the IRRB, would go back out as part of that $5 million project. You see Superior National Promotion, $100,000, I'll come back to that in a minute. You see $50,000 for seed money for the next housing project. As I think you are aware, we're breaking ground in Grand Marais. Four of those housing units are already constructed and hopefully will be delivered in November. We want to proceed next year with Phase Two. The 60 grand that the county sends to us, you see, it goes to the city in two forms, $32,000 for property tax assessment, and the balance, $28,000, is a direct check to the city. So let me just talk a little bit about the $100,000 marketing for the golf course, because that's not a very good description.
Okay.
Nationally, as I think everybody is aware here, in the 90s, the National Golf Foundation said, "We need a lot more golf courses," and people built a lot more golf courses. Subsequent to that, in the first decade of this century, a lot of golf courses found that they could not compete. The amount of play decreased, and it was spread over more golf courses. Jeff Brower, our architect, whose name I think you know, told me a year ago there were 1,500 golf courses in the US that went out of business and only 150 new ones built. Particularly on the municipal side, it's been shrinking. We've suffered in two ways, one reflecting the national trend, and secondarily, we have not, up until four years ago, reinvested much in our golf course, so we have suffered, and our number of rounds is down significantly. One of the issues we have is doing a better job of marketing the golf course.
Well, we should, if I could interject, we recently completed the River Nine, and it was scheduled to open next spring. We're actually conditionally opening it now. I took a tour there last week. It is absolutely gorgeous. Interviewed a couple of the golfers that were out there, it was a gorgeous day, of course, and they were busy taking pictures and Facebooking their friends, and, and it's a, it's a tremendous facility. Encourage anybody to go out there, either play or walk, or get a tour there. I think it's something we can really be proud of. But in order for us to be successful there and start paying back the bonds, I mean, we're, we're cash flowing okay now, the bonds payback starts next year. It was my suggestion that, that might be a good idea to bump up the promotional budget so we get a good pop, get people playing the course. So Scott, you can keep rolling there.
Well, first, the national impact and lack of reinvestment historically, so the play is down considerably. Two, over the last four years, we've rebuilt 18 of the 27 holes, and they are spectacular. We have put in, we, the EDA, put in a lot of sweat equity over the last four years to make that happen, and we're very pleased with it. But if you're driving up here on the way east or on the way west, you know, it's a quarter of a mile into the clubhouse, and you have 60 seconds or less to look at the entrance and the landscaping and the signage, all of which are relatively inadequate for the number of dollars we've reinvested in those 18 holes. So this $100,000 isn't just marketing the golf course, it's marketing in a broader sense. It's, it's new entrance, it's new landscaping, it's a, what we would call a hard opening as opposed to the soft opening we had two weeks ago, bringing Jeff Brower back up and having Jeff, who's got the relationship with the National Trade Publications, to get them up here, because that is going to amplify this well beyond Cook County. So it's a much bigger concept than marketing. A lot of it is hard assets. We want people to be well aware when they drive by that there's a great golf course there, and it's hard to envision that right now. Happy to try and answer questions, as long as it's not the trail development, because those are the pros back there.
Sure. So we will, Commissioner Starley, do you have any questions or comments for EDA staff here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I guess probably right now, I would say, in the light of the budget situation in our county and everything, I don't know as far as your budgeting and priorities here, but I think $100,000 right now is a little, and I know it goes for other things besides marketing, but I'm having trouble with that amount right now.
Well, I think of it as an investment, not an expense, and we critically need to do a better job from the highway than we have been.
Do you have a temporary sign right now? You going to redo that?
Very temporary.
Okay.
We've had about 5,000 people vote on it, not all in favor.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Great. Okay, Commissioner DuKirk?
I eat, sleep, and drink this, so I'll leave it to the rest of you.
Commissioner Burshin?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Desha?
I think I got to agree with Commissioner Starley on the timing of this isn't very good. With the levy, the way it is, people are looking for cuts in the budget, and I just can't support this at this time, so.
Okay.
If I could kick in, I mean, this isn't a frivolous request. If you look at our advertising budget, it's like $50,000, and I've looked at the detail that it goes very, it barely covers anything. I mean, it's, when you get into promotion, money goes really quickly, just to kind of cover newspaper articles, or newspapers and ads, and a little bit of radio, and, like I mentioned, the bond payments start accruing next year, so we really need to, you know, I don't want to be, I'd rather be here asking for promotional dollars to, to really give this a pop and make it successful, and I really don't want to be here next year looking for dollars because we're not getting the rounds to cover our debt service. So this is, in my mind, not as frivolous, it's critical.
Madam Chair, I just want to add that I think in this last 12 months or 18 months, the EDA has really hit their stride and delivered a lot of good things, and we are asking the county board to invest, and are continuing to do so.
Thank you. And I would just say, $100,000 to improve that entrance seems like a very wise investment. And from a marketing and advertising standpoint, you, you have all those people driving by there, and so that's the place to put a lot of advertising dollars, and it absolutely needs help and some investment there, because we've already made this enormous investment in the facility, in the golf course, and to not do that would be, I think, really foolish, and not, to not do it doesn't make any sense to me. We really need, in my opinion, to, it makes the rest of the golf course make sense. We need to get people off the highway.
What's the balance of the process? Will, will you call us in again prior to making a decision, or?
Well, we don't have to make the decision on the EDA Budget today, so it probably...
Yeah, we have to do it by the 30th.
Oh.
All special taxing districts, we have to have a proposed...
Okay. I didn't realize that. Oh, okay.
But that, theirs can change, it can go up, down, they're not limited the same way we are.
Okay, that, okay, I misinterpreted that. Okay, so I guess we do have to make a decision today.
Well, next...
By tomorrow, by next, by next meeting. So, no, we won't ask you to come back in by next meeting. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Is there some way that you could have some priorities? With the $100,000, could you pick, let's say this year you're going to do 50, would you do marketing, would you do the sign? Could you somehow give yourself priorities as we have to do our priorities, too?
You're good role models, that's true. We could do that if we were asked to, and if, if you were asking that, I guess we can do that. We, we've done a lot of priorities to develop this particular request, so there's a number of things that aren't on this, because we wouldn't be presenting a credible budget in our mind if we wanted to tackle everything that we'd like to. It's been edited.
Okay, well, I think perhaps we need to hear from the, hear about the $25,000, not $25,000. It's a different $25,000, the Director of Trail Development Maintenance, just so we have the whole picture before we go further. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Tim Kennedy, I'm president of the Superior Cycling Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the request that's in the EDA Budget, and I know we've had a long history working with the County Superior Cycling Association, securing grants to build our single-track trail system. Right now, we have about 10 miles of trail at Pincushion, about seven, eight miles of trail at Britain Peak. Of course, our plan that we put together calls for extensive network that's far greater than that. That plan calls for connecting both the Britain Peak and the Pincushion Cluster of Trails with a single-track connector trail. We've raised money to do that, to at least get started on that project. That was raised through Federal Recreational Trail Program funds and also Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission legacy funds to the tune of over $450,000 for that 16-mile connector trail between Britain Peak and Lutzen Mountains, which we hope to start on next season. The, kind of the idea of, of this funding is to secure enough money to hire somebody to work on behalf of the club, to participate in a number of different areas. One is, is in the area of trail maintenance, and building more trail requires obviously more trail maintenance, and if we pay attention at all to some of the outcomes of the county Parks and Trails Plan, one of the big issues that was identified there was the need for management and maintenance of existing trails, you know, and we're no different than any of, than any of the other trail users in that we have a, have a need and demand for that kind of thing. The other part that this person would participate in is, is involvement with some of the events that go on, and of course, we know, we have some major events that, that occur, the Lutzen 99er, which draws, you know, 1,800 participants, has established history and is known throughout the state and the region, and we get riders from, really from all over the country coming to, to ride that event. The La Grande de Nord event in Grand Marais, which is still a relatively new event, only in its second year, has had a couple hundred finishers in that race, and we expect that that race will continue to grow, probably not to the extent that the Lutzen 99er is, but expect that event to grow. Then we have other events, the Norpine Winter Classic, which is a fat bike race held on Lutzen. Last year was the first year, and there were nearly 200 individuals registered for that event. We expect that that event will continue to grow. We have the Sawtooth Mountain Challenge up at Pincushion, that's a club event, and over MEA Weekend. We're looking at other possible new events. There've been conversations about Winter Triathlon, which could be a combination of skiing, biking, snow shoeing, you know, recognizing that certain times of the year that there's, you know, it's quiet, and bringing more people in is, is, you know, really something that, you know, businesses would, would benefit from. The whole idea of winter riding is one that would expand our tourist season up here, and we would hope to do that. So clearly, you know, we think that the, the current events and potential for future events is, is a significant economic, has a significant economic impact on the community. So the individual we're looking for to, to do this would probably split their time between doing physical work out on the trails, maintaining, taking care of managing crews to, to deal with trail maintenance, would also be involved with grant writing and grant administration, which is a big task. The Cook County Mountain Bike Trail System has been, you know, put into the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission system of regional parks and trails. The county submitted that plan a couple years ago and was designated as a regional trail system, and we are, when we start on the Britain Peak-Lutzen Mountains Connector, the county is going to be a partner in that, because the county received funds for that legacy portion, which is $278,000. You know, we want, we want to make sure that that money is put to good use, we want to make sure that, you know, everybody understands the, that the need for trail building and quality trail building is paramount to us, and as we look to the future and try to come up with a plan for continuing that connection from Lutzen Mountains all the way to Pincushion Mountain, we know we've got a lot more work to do. So this is kind of just a, a starting, starting point in securing funding. We're also looking at trying to, to secure money from Lloyd K. Johnson Foundation for other remaining portion of this funding, also looking at some in-kind office space funding from Cascade Vacation Rentals to house the individual that would be hired for this, and I guess our expectation is that in the long run, there's a benefit to the county, there's a benefit to the businesses by building more trails, drawing more riders, and making Cook County be, you know, one of the destination locations in the state for mountain biking and gravel road riding. We already have, have a reputation, we think it can be even better, so.
Great.
If you would like to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Desha, do you have some questions for?
Yeah, I do. I just asked Brady where the Somerville Club money came from, and it comes from the state grant and license fees and whatnot there. I'd like to see, he'll explore some of those options before the county starts giving money for it, I guess.
Yeah, one of the things that, that happens, there's trail, trail user groups secure their funding in a number of different ways, and of course, the state grant aid trail system provides certain fundings. It's, it's not available to cycling groups, you know, we're not part of a grant aid trail system, you know. It's unfortunate, because I do think that there, there should be a mechanism for this kind of thing. The state hasn't seen a way to, to implement that, and all the trails... And all the trails that get built, state trails that get built, regional trails, even local trails that get built, are built by a combination of grant sources that are outside of a, kind of just an established system. You know, so the ski trails, the snowmobile trails, they pay fees to the state, and the state then provides funding back for maintenance and for operations to those user groups. Unfortunately, bike groups are not part of that. Yeah, I think it's short-sighted, but...
Madam Chair, just a little background. The EDA got this presentation. We felt it fits very nicely in our mission as economic development. Biking is just a rapidly rising sport. As Tim mentioned, they're fitting in events on the shoulder season and seasons when they're not busy in town here. We think it's a great deal. And a great thanks goes to people like Tim and Mike. Tim's been working hard on this for many years. I wouldn't even hesitate to guess how many grant dollars he's brought in to help build trails and all that. Now, it's... We just think, and this is just seed money, to go get more grants and build his full-time position. And, you know, we don't look at it as long-term support, but, you know, proof of concept. We did go back and we suggested they look at the entrance fees, you know, for these races as a way to partially fund here as well. So it's got us excited on the EDA Board, I know that. Thank you.
I'd just follow up with what Howard has said. You know, our organization is small. I mean, like most of the user group organizations in Cook County, they're made up of pretty dedicated volunteers that commit a lot of time to make things happen. And we have a fantastic system of trails in this county because of those volunteers. You know, the idea of hiring somebody to do this legwork, to make these things happen, speeds up this whole process, I think. And if we're looking to secure additional grant funding, we need people to write grants, administer grants, manage contractors, you know, make sure that the maintenance of these trails that we build is being done in a manner that draws people back. Because if people have a bad experience, they're not going to come back. And we don't want to have that kind of reputation. We want the kind of reputation that people say, "This is great, you know, this is... I've been here once and I'll tell my friends and, you know, I'll be back." And, you know, this is kind of like Howard said, the seed money to hire somebody with the idea that we would try to figure out a way to make this self-sustaining. And so we'd be looking at probably a two-year commitment to trying to get this off the ground and then trying to, you know, figure out a way to make this position self-sustaining so that it could be there to continue these efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner DeShaw?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I don't know if everyone knows this, but some maybe do, that I was involved in this in the '80s. The first mountain bikers were cross-country skiers. And I've known Tim for a long time. So I got involved in the development of mountain biking when I was in Minneapolis Ski Club and was the representative that met with hem and parks in the cities and developed, you know, cross-country skiing to some extent, but also developing multi-use mountain bike trails. And so I've had enough experience with it to realize that it was highly successful, obviously in the cities. I was also involved in Team Berkey in Hayward, Wisconsin, and did some of the very earliest mountain bike races over there. But also got involved with some of the leaders in the community in developing mountain biking. And that really had a tremendous economic impact on the Hayward area, as well as the cross-country skiing. And it's a great snowmobiling area as well. And so I think that Cook County could definitely have a lot of growth and a lot of potential is outdoor use and especially in the winter season, other than downhill skiing, which I'm not against at all. So I'm very supportive of this. I'm in support of healthy living. And whenever people are getting out and getting some exercise and so forth, that has a benefit that I think is, you know, just common sense. But I support this and I think there's a lot of potential for this. And I think this investment will have some good long-term results. So appreciate all your work with this. And our potential here is great, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner DuKirk?
I think this is a great project. I am the commissioner on the EDA who suggested they charge an entrance fee. Just looking at a number of participants, if you take the 99er and the La Grande du Nord, 10 bucks a head gives you 20 grand right there. So... But I will tell you that the majority of the EDA Board supported this request.
I think it was unanimous.
That's more than a majority.
More than a majority.
It came before us more than once. It came to us last year for the budget. And so we said we would bring it as part of our agenda to this board. I don't know that we took a formal vote on it as how we would go forward. It's hard to take a formal vote when this governing body line items things and tells us we can't do it, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling? So what about upping the entry fee? Would that work?
Well, I mean, it's probably something that's going to be discussed, but I think that recognizing that the lag in time for that to happen and our... Kind of our... The things that we need to get done are just going to get pushed back. I mean, we've been doing all these things up to this point within the club. The idea is that we need to be more aggressive and, you know, it needs to be more than just a volunteer-based operation. Could it be done with fees? I would hope that we would be able to raise some or all of this through fees, but I just, you know, think to get this started and off the ground, we need to do something sooner and quicker and have a clear idea of how this is going to start rather than, you know, massaging the... Because the Lutzner 99er is a private race. I mean, it's not a club race. It's maintained by a private entity. It might take some time for that conversation to evolve to the point of being a self-sustaining type thing.
But the person you hire would also coordinate the trails and take care of that type of thing for them too?
That... You know, I don't think we have a completely clear picture of how this person would spend their time, but recognizing that the 99er course and the courses in these other races are important to the success of their race, I would say that there'd be some involvement. I think the focus is probably going to be on our existing and future single-track trails that the SEA manages.
Now, as far as getting grants, you mentioned Lloyd K. What type of money do they usually support?
Maybe, I don't like if you can... I mean, they support operating funds for organizations that are trying to create a position that becomes self-sustaining. And they... We think that this fits within the scope of what it is that they generally will approve.
And that would go toward the 25,000?
That would be in addition to the 25,000, yes. 25,000 would come through the EDA. And there would be a, I think, an amount, we've talked about, possibly up to $50,000 from Lloyd K. and matching in-kind funds from Cascade Vacation Rental for office space. And then we might still be looking for other sources, so...
So you would be actually looking at 75,000?
The total budget.
With your EDA and your total budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just, I don't have any more questions, but I did want to say that this is a community, this is an economy built on wood products. Used to be fishing, and now it's basically built on recreation. And having just come back from this two-day conference that we were at with the whole state of county commissioners, and I'm just thinking of them, if this had been brought to any of them as an opportunity, they would be jumping at it. This opportunity is, it's probably too common for us in Cook County because we sit among world-class athletes and world-class business people and world-class this and world-class that. We kind of tend to take things for granted. But I'm just realizing as I sit here, it's, this is what an amazing opportunity, what an amazing group of people who, Tim, you've invested years of your life working toward this goal to actually have paid staff for $25,000 so we can really launch this mountain biking thing. And all the years and time spent building trails and marketing trails and biking the trails and skiing the trails and Anton and Howard and Scott and Marion, it just... I'm just reminded that this is a very unusual community with an amazing opportunity. And we already have a world-class golf course. And why we wouldn't invest in the signage to get people off the highway to experience it, to me seems... It's not a good idea. I mean, we kind of have to do something to get people off the highway to use that facility. This is a community rich in recreational activity. This is our brand, this is who we are. And I just applaud the EDA for combining it all, bringing it to us in this form. And I, for one, really want to support this budget because I think the EDA is doing really great work. It adds enormous quality of life to everyone who lives here. Even if you don't bike or hike or ski or participate, there are all kinds of amenities that are here because of those things. And just the quality of the people you see on the street and the conversations you get to have in coffee shops and, I don't know, I just really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
So we are... Yes. So I would entertain...
Excuse me, I need clarification.
Yeah, so we can, yeah, we can still discuss, yes. So basically, what EDA is asking us is for 125,000. What are they asking for?
We're really approving the top line.
The budget. Yes, well, there's 100,000 for marketing. So we're looking at the top line, which is 300,000. Is that right? What are we asking?
About 360, 290 is the total. They break it down into two lines, County Levy and Cedar Grove, but that's the total levy. 360,000, 290. Last year it was 386, 290, so...
Which isn't a pass-through. We're talking about the amount that isn't a pass-through.
Yeah, this is the...
Yeah.
This is the EDA's levy that we would...
Would be on the tax statement.
Got it.
And with the EDAs, it can go down or it can go up.
Right.
Before it finalizes in December.
So what was that final number, Brady?
360, 290.
Okay, 360, 290. Okay. So that's the number the motion should have. Okay.
And if I could point out, it is $26,000 less than our request last year.
Right, right. Right, okay. My other question is, so Brady, you said it can go up or down? If we approve the whole thing, it can go down? Who works on it going down? EDA or us?
Us.
Well, the county sets the levy.
Okay.
By statute.
So we could say, "These things need to be reconsidered"? Okay. So if we approve it now, we have the chance to renegotiate?
Either way, up or down.
Which is unusual.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner DuKirk?
The difference with this budget is we have the trail development. So I'm not comfortable with us setting a budget that we don't intend to support in two months.
I understand.
Makes me uncomfortable.
Yes.
Because I don't want the work that they're doing to walk out of this room and think, "Okay, the Board said that they support the EDA's levy." And then on December 20th or whatever, say, "We don't support it." So if we have direction for the EDA, I want it to be clear direction for them so that...
So perhaps we could do a poll?
You know, I think part of why Stacy's here is that Cook County Local Energy has been line itemmed before. And so...
So we can do a poll. Commissioner DeShaw, do you have a budget in mind that, like, you are in favor or you're not in favor of certain items on this budget?
I'm not in favor of $100,000. I'd be in favor of a $260,000 budget versus the 360.
Okay. Commissioner Gershman?
I support as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
I will support what this Board decides.
Commissioner Sterling?
I will support 260.
Okay. So... Jan, you didn't tell us?
I'm going to make... Okay, I'm going to make a motion to support the EDA budget as it presented, $360,290.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So passes three to two. Okay. That doesn't mean that we won't revisit, but for today's purposes, we have passed it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Yeah, excellent.
Yeah.
Did you overhear that?
Yeah.
Super sonic.
We don't, Jeff, we don't have to finalize the total budget every line item, but we just, we have to have a levy today. So this is just telling you where we're at. Because departments have made some changes. This just shows you where it's at. And most of them I've listed at the bottom just recently. You know about the health changes and the things that Highway and Human Services said that they could cut, so we've included that in the numbers. And then emergency management, this is what Jeff sent out and said, "What can you do for us?" And then these are some of the responses. And emergency management says that you can remove the 8,000 for the truck. Molly and I looked at the CHIPS, that's the child protection that we pay out of the court administrator budget. And just given what it's cost so far this year, we put our heads together and said we've got to add 3,000 more because we're going to spend that. It's court-ordered, so... So we added 3,000 to that because that's likely what it's going to cost. And then Tim Nelson just redistributed the buffer grant amongst some other departments. And part of it was to give 6,500 to Department 390 because that's a state grant that Human Services is going to keep. They give that to 390 sometimes, but they'll keep it this year. So Tim redistributed the buffer grant to fill that one. But he said, "I think I can add 10,000 for recycling fees," so he added that into his budget. So those are a lot of the small changes. Which, this just shows the assumption of 14.9%. And with all of these changes, it just says we're still looking for 191,000 to get to 14.9. And we know that some of that is going to be the non-mandated. Haven't made any line item changes. We just know that we've... You guys... Haven't made any line item changes, we just know that we, you guys generally decided to cut the 67,000, so we know that that's probably gonna change out here. So that leaves you with about 125,000, and Jeff's got some ideas there. But the thing we, we do have to deal with, and in that packet there, is that the, the city sent us the library budget, and in light of their 29% health insurance increase this year, they upped that request, which originally saw was just under 5%, I think, but this is now 11%, so you have to consider that. And some of you are new, and we've got a joint powers agreement with the library, have had for years and years. So I just put a copy there, and in the second page I highlighted the part, if it's over 5%, you have the right to disprove, disapprove of that increase. But if you do, you have to tell them a written notice by September 30th. So this is just so you know that. Either this week or next week, you have to tell them whether you're okay with that. But that number is in the budget right now, so it's in the general fund.
The full amount of the...
The full amount, it's another 12,414, so gets, it's 11% increase instead of the five. If it's up to five, you have to accept it by the joint powers. If it's over five, you have to tell them that you're not going to accept it and negotiate.
If we're not going to accept it.
If you're not going to.
Very good. Okay, so let's, let's address the library first. I could just say on behalf of the library that there, there was just a person who blogged about the library, who just came to the library unbeknownst to anyone and did this blog about the experience that they had at this particular library. And this experience far surpassed any expectation she had. It met all, all, she, she travels to libraries, were, were all over the place, and she just reported that our library met, exceeded all of her standards for a great library, and she just raved. Our library has done really some amazing work in the last couple of years. So I just wanted to put that word up, that the library does really, really good work, and it's kind of the centerpiece of education, one of the centerpieces of education in Cook County. So, Commissioner Deshaun, I'll start with you. Do you have some concerns?
Some reasons, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Bershene?
Well, if I understand it correctly, the city's asking us for about $12,000 to help with their situation. Is it 18? I thought it was 12.
It's the addition, they gave us one earlier that wasn't 11%. It's after they found out about their health insurance that they went back and revised. So we didn't have this initially, so.
So this 18, 304 affects our budget by that much?
Another, yeah, it's another 12,000.
Another 12, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it gets it to 18,000 over last year, which is about 11.7%.
Well, I would, I would like to speak to that. I think what goes around comes around, and I think if we're asked to support something in, it's not this much money, at least I think in the larger context, that we're willing to cooperate. And I'm into collaboration and cooperation because I think sometimes what goes around comes around to us someday, too. So I would support that.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
Brady, we had a tentative two-year agreement. Was that 16 and 17, or was that to include 18?
That was 16 and 17.
16 and 17, so this was additional.
Yeah.
And kind of along the lines of Myron, the library is used by the entire county, not just the city. And if we say no to this, the city still has to pay the bill, so it'll increase the city taxes, and so a little bit of what goes around comes around. We need to help with the burden because it's, it's a burden for all.
And it's an amazing asset. It stands out in the local libraries. I guess that's, like, it's no, it's not a normal library. And it really supports their efforts to make it even more extraordinary than it already is, so. Thank you. And, but that doesn't mean you have to... Commissioner Starley?
Oh, what happened with their health plan that went up so much? The city's plan went up?
Well, it's just kind of the same as ours. It was, I mean, they were very low last year, and we had a huge increase. This year it was just in reverse, it just depends on, you know, usage, actuarial events. I mean, we could be in the same boat next year, we don't know.
And they have how many employees? About?
I'm not sure.
About six?
Four.
No, there's more than that.
Yeah. One, two, probably six.
Can I hear someone else, or is there...
Yes, there was a plan. The library's been operating in a plan to become a more sustainable. In the past, there was one full-time employee, and so the library board upped that to two full-time employees, so we had some backup. So we've changed, we went from one full-time to two full-time, and I don't think we changed the number of employees other than that. So there was, it was a two-year plan to absorb that cost, and it was last year and this year, no, I can't remember if it was the year before or this year.
16 and 17.
16 and 17. So 18, it's not in 18, okay.
What do you mean by change the employees, Bobby?
Well, they went from 17 from $31,000 to 17 budget of 90,000, and then their revised budget of almost 104,000 for their full-time employee.
Well, yeah, the 31 was a year to...
Was year to date.
April.
So 48,000.
Yeah. So it looks like they went from some part-time, went full-time.
Yeah, we, we increased the full-time from one to two, and that's what that represents, that top line and the salary full-time. It doubled, or more than doubled. Yeah, so the percentage increases in 2016 and 2017 reflect that going to a full-time. We, we bit it off in two bites rather than one.
Yeah.
And then the 2018, it purely reflects that 29% increase in health insurance.
But if you look at their 2017 budget and their 2018 on their total operating request, it's a $36,000 request, so it's more than the health insurance. And I know, I mean, none of, I'm not on the board, so I haven't gone through and gone up and down. I see they've reduced their estimate of insurance on the building, and then they've had to increase in other things, and so, you know, I'm sure they've...
So it's, it's more than just the increase?
Yeah, I mean, there's other items in here that have changed.
And we were probably looking at an increase, kind of a normal cost of living increase.
Well, they've got books, periodicals. They had zero budgeted for 17, and now they've got, and they actually spent 10 already.
They all probably came due for their subscriptions.
Yeah. It just looks like there was stuff that wasn't budgeted, and now it's budgeted.
Madam Chair, yeah, I'll comment, too. I think that, um, much of this increase is by union contract as well.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that, you know, just happens. We don't have any control over that.
And I can also speak to the books, periodicals, perhaps.
They used to spend over 20,000 a year.
Well, and...
Go to electronic.
Yeah, I don't know why it's lower. Well, they're, they do have some funds, donations that people have given them over the years that are earmarked for specific things like books, et cetera. And sometimes we choose to spend that money rather than put it on the levy.
Right. So they've been using their fund balance to offset the levy for a while?
Yeah, yeah.
I know that story.
And there's, and, and, you know, it's partly to alleviate large increases. And they didn't use it in 17, right? It just doesn't, for some reason, it doesn't seem right, but...
Well, it looks like they didn't budget for it, but then in April, they found, they spent it. They've got 10,000, so that's probably what they based it on. They said, well, I guess we do need some periodicals, not just electronic.
Yep.
That's what it looks like.
Jan, are you wanna know everything?
Uh-huh.
So you know they've gone through this?
Yes, oh, yeah. Yes.
And Brady, if this is part of our overall budget, they just need to know where they're at, right?
Right. It's just, if you're going to disprove it, it says you have to give them notice now that you're...
Right.
It doesn't mean, I don't think it means you would have to, but if you say, we might disprove it, you gotta, you have to let them know by September 30th.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so we don't need to take action on this if we...
No. I mean, you could think about it till next week. And if next week you said, well, darn it, we want them to come in and talk about it or whatever, you could, you could send them a letter next week if that's...
We're gonna be short one Commissioner next week.
I think we should try to settle it now, since Mr. Deshaun's gonna be on. So at least he has a voice.
Okay. Sure. Commissioner Starley?
Would you vote?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes. Well, you know, it's for the county good, and so many people use it, children, and the programs they have, all the books I've checked out. I mean, it's a good asset for the whole area, so I'd be in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
I support.
Commissioner Bershene?
Support.
Okay. Commissioner Deshaun?
Yeah.
Okay, I think with that in mind, would someone like to make a motion to support the library's budget in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Which brings us into the full budget discussion. All right. So...
Madam Chair and Commissioners, in light of the obligation that we have to set a preliminary levy, as, as Brady Powers mentioned, we don't have to set a finalized budget now, we have to set a preliminary levy, not to, an amount not to exceed what we set our final levy and our final budget after the truth and taxation meeting. And after hearing some of the comments at the, at the town hall meetings about minimizing the, the impact of levy increases on the public, and hearing some people suggesting options about potentially solving our budget issue in, in a single, in a larger chunk rather than three equal chunks, I did what I said I was going to do last week and, and provided you with a menu of choices. And if you look at, at the page that has the different options on it, you'll see that the, the top, the top section basically outlines the, the plan that the Budget Committee had put together and balanced three-year 14.9, 13.9, 12.9% increases, the impact on the median tax bill, that, and then the projection, capital, the capital projections over the next 10-year period and our capacity to do capital projects. And those numbers are largely from the Eller's Financial Management presentation last week. The good news we've received related to our health benefits renewal for 2018 and Eller's comment about not necessarily needing to add to fund balance in 2018, 19, or 20 if we want to maintain our goal, but needing to start adding to fund balance in 2021 gives us three different ways to, to potentially solve, to solve the same issue. Again, I'll, I'll remind the Commissioners that we have, we have an unbalanced budget, and there's two ways to solve it. We can, we can solve it by addressing a revenue problem, or we can solve it by addressing the number of programs that we're serving. At some point in time, on either side of that equation, something has to be solved so that they balance with the things that are within our control. And to this point, I've not received any direction to look at, at very much in the lines of programs and services, so I've been concentrating on revenue solutions to the Option A that I, that I present here is still a three-year plan, but you'll see that the percentages are, are different, 14.9% in the first year, 10, 9, and 9, 9. The, the impact on the median home tax bill estimated at $1,100 in 2017 would be less in 2020 than the preliminary proposal. It reduces our capital project capacity by about $9 million instead of $36 million worth of project capacity. It demonstrates about $27 million worth of project capacity. Option B is a, is a, option B and C are plans whereby we, we take the biggest burden in the first year, and we, and we lighten the burden in the second year. Both of these plans, people have astutely pointed out that if we balance this over three years, the compounding component of those three years worth of medium-sized large increases has a significant impact on, on the tax values, and it does. And you can see, you know, $1,100 to $1,600 for the median tax bill over three years is, is a significant impact. When we reduce for the changes in our operational assumptions based on the information we've gotten this year, we reduce that a little bit. When we look at opt, option B, and option B says solve it in one year, but actually we look at a larger increase in the first year than we, than we've been talking about. But if you remember in June, when we were talking about solving this in one year, two year, or three years, we were saying that a one-year solution was in the 26 to 30% range. Because of the news we've gotten related to healthcare and fund balance and some other assumptions, we believe we can solve that deficit with a 19% increase. Honestly, if we, if we would have held with 19% increase, we'd be looking at 7 or 8% this year. So we're faced with the same problem that we had last year. And with the good news related to healthcare, we can solve it with the same number that we were proposing last year. This reduces the impact to the median home tax bill over three years. Instead of $1,600, it goes up to 1,465. Option C, and it, and it provides capital project capacity of about $20 million over the same timeframe. Now that, talking about capital project capacity, we know that we have some capital needs. We haven't scoped or identified... We haven't scoped or identified what specifically we need related to law enforcement. We haven't scoped or identified specifically what we need related to to the highway facility. We know we have a commitment to roads and bridges. That's why we enacted the transportation sales tax. 20 million is still a lot, and at that point in time, if this is a solution that the Commissioners want to support, then we can look at ramping up from the 3% to 4% range by a couple percentage points for a couple of years around the issuance of debt for a major capital project and deal with that capital project within the time period, not within this period when we're settling our operational deficit. So there's some value to that. And there's some relief for the taxpayers in that. Option C is, again, a first-year weighted option where we're at 14.9% in the first year, holding to what we have and dropping to 5.9 and 4.9 in the subsequent years. The problem with this is I don't see that we're going back to Brady's summary budget that says we need to make $191,000 worth of adjustments to get to 14.9%. And I don't see us being able to support the additional two and a half staff, the full-time Veteran Service Officer, and the additional one and a half requested increase in Health and Human Services if we go with a 14.9% this year and plan to back off to a single digit in 2019. So that's the single biggest difference between B and C. They're both a front-weighted, let's solve the operational problem this year and then move on with the budget that we can sustain. The difference between B and C is the budget we can sustain has approximately two fewer FTEs if we start with 14.9. And then you'll see that the plan provides approximate capital capacity of $13 million. Option A and B, I actually had Chris Mickelson run those scenarios and confirm those numbers. And within a few hundred thousand dollars, he confirmed those numbers are are realistic. He did not have time to run C, but since I used the same math to solve A and B as I did C, I'm assuming it's fairly close.
Okay.
So those are the additional options. I would give one other point of reference. We've had some conversation about the 12% property tax circuit breaker that relates to a property tax increase in excess of 12%. And it's in addition to any other property tax relief that somebody qualifies for based on income or other qualification. Brady did some scenarios, and I'll let him tell you what he found, but the scenario that I did, looking at my tax bill, is that if we raise our taxes 14.9% this year, the 12% circuit breaker is a circuit breaker on the entire tax bill for a property within the county. So if the entire tax bill goes up by more than 12%, then, and nothing else changes, i.e. we didn't add value to the building, something else didn't change, then the person can apply for relief of the amount in excess of 12%, up to 60% of that amount above 12%. The way it looks right now with the city's proposal, with the county's proposal, a 14.9% increase, nobody would qualify for a 12% circuit breaker at that point in time. It would get people right up to the point of having an overhaul, overall impact in and out approximate range. Anything above 14.9%, people would likely qualify for a 2/3 to 3/4% reduction of the difference above 14.9% increase. What does that mean? When we're looking at a 14.9% increase on the median value home, we were showing about $170 worth of change in 2018. And if we were to look at 20%, that number would be about 210. And in those calculations, about 30 of those $40 would be covered potentially by the circuit breaker if nothing else changes.
You, how much more?
30 of the 40 additional dollars would likely be covered and reimbursable through that 12%.
So like the same?
So it takes, if we were looking at 19.9 instead of 14.9, essentially that property tax relief buys down 3% or 4% of that additional increase. And Brady ran some numbers. You were looking at a larger number but found similar findings.
Yeah, this this one here is, this is based off of what Myron was saying at the last meeting and other people, so you should have a copy of that. The last page there. So we just, yeah. So this one's looking primarily at the income-related, because there's two credits. You got the regular credit and you got the special over 12% that anybody qualifies for. This is, this looks at both, but primarily, it's looking at the people with the lower incomes. So if you look down the left, it's different. These are actual houses around the county, and the income levels are 32, 52, or 59,000. The 52 is about the average, so somebody below the average and somebody above the average. And then you can see these homes are County Road 7 and a couple of them in Grand Marais and so forth. And then it shows what the 2017 taxes were, and then what it would be in 2018 with 14.9% increase. And then assuming no other changes, just the county tax, because we had to assume something. So no other changes, nobody would qualify for the special refund. That's the next column over. But here's your total taxes at 14.9, and then, but what if we ramped it up to 25%? So there's your taxes on 25%. Now, some of them, not all of them, but some of them qualify for a special refund. Not every house. And that's line, so line 13 then is the total tax again. So the total refund at these various income levels, you can see, for example, at a $32,000 income, at $2,288, at the 25% increase, they're getting 998 back. And at the 25%, that's on the, I'm sorry, that's on the 2,196, 14.9%. On the $2,288 of taxes at 25% increase, they could get 1,063 of that back in credit. And then way over to the right is just showing what happens between 14 and 25. You see the total refunds, 998 or 1,063, so there's 65 additional refund. And that's compared to the $92 of additional tax. So they're getting about 70, 70, and look down the bottom, anywhere from 70 to 80 to even 90% of that increase between 14 and 25. So just looking at that narrow increase, they're getting 70 to 90% of that back if they apply for the credit.
So Brady, if they apply for the credit, meaning that's the income-related one?
Yeah.
Both have to be applied for, even the 12?
Yeah, you have to apply for both of, you have to apply for these.
Okay.
So probably has to be, yeah.
Everybody would have to apply for this?
Yeah, so we probably need to do some marketing to try and make people aware of it and have places they could come to our office, assess her. I know there's private entities that are trying to help.
If people are having their taxes done, most likely the tax preparer would recommend...
Yep.
So it's just a snapshot on these, these are household income levels.
It's a complicated snapshot, but it is a snapshot, and it does, but it does tell you the story.
It tells you the story that government is complicated, but if you can wade through it, you can lessen
You will be rewarded.
You can significantly lessen the impact, especially at those low-income levels.
Yes.
Yes.
One, Madam Chair.
Yes.
On the right-hand side, additional tax from 14.9 to 25. Does that include if we would consider the 19?
It would be something in between. This is just, yeah, this is just what we were talking about last week, so.
But it have to be over 14.9?
Yep, at 14.9, at least at 14.9, it doesn't trigger the 12% or it's not enough in it to trigger that. But there's still maybe an income.
Yes, the income is, that's there every year for anybody at those income levels. Depending on the value, but of course, this also depends on the value of your house. This is assuming these houses, these houses are significant. The Grand Marais home at 205,000, estimated market value, the one on County Road 7 at 208, another one at 288, 324, 174, and then down at the bottom, a house with 125,000. So, I mean, those big refunds are because you have a fairly substantial valued house. So you have a low-income, large property value.
Okay. Thank you. This is really useful information, because what we're trying to do is become fiscally responsible, make that long-term financial plan work for the future, not just for today, and balance the budget. I think we're all in favor of doing that. And to alleviate levy for the constituents. And that's what we've been focusing on, and all of this information is really helping us see that in black and white, so that we can make an excellent decision here today. So I really appreciate the work you've all done to present us with scenarios that do both of those things. Balance the budget and alleviate tax liability. So perhaps, before we make a motion, will you make a motion?
No, I'm not going to make a motion. I'd like to raise some...
Yes, so I think we should discuss before anybody makes a motion. Let's do thorough discussions.
I would like to introduce the discussion, if I could.
Yes, thank you.
As I mentioned before break, you know, I was advocating for this three-year plan to reduce the the deficit balance that we had between our revenue and expenses, and I've changed on that. Just hearing the situation at the federal level and also listening to the people during our budget hearings. So I would like to propose for comment or whatever, or just a straw poll, that we look at increasing this deficit up in that first year, that 8%. So for discussion purposes, I'm not advocating any one of these things. I'm just saying that I would like to see us move the focus to taking care of the deficit in the first year in 2018.
Great, we'll do a straw poll.
I agree with that.
Okay, Commissioner Deschamps, you don't agree, okay. Commissioner Sterling, I'm leaning, okay, leaning. I'm totally agreeing with that, biting it off in the year 2018. Okay. Do you want to make that further, or?
No, I think just open it up for other comments. I think that's a significant change, and I think that's, if we can move the discussion forward on that basis, unless Commissioner Story is sort of in charge, because she's on the fence.
Well, and I think, you know, we all need an opportunity to, you know, speak our piece about where we are in this process. So I'll start with Commissioner Deschamps. Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'm looking at the budget here, and I'm not seeing, you're talking about deficits and whatnot here. We're still adding $240,000 to the highway budget for us little slush fund there. We just gave $125,000 to the EDA. We're talking about balancing the budget here and trying to work for the, or do for the people we elected us, and it seems to me we're going against them. You know, I'm going to take a line from your mother's service. I'm going to be a voice for the people who aren't heard, and I do not support this levy.
Thank you. Commissioner Breschon, do you want to speak further about your thinking on this?
Well, I guess individually, I had in my campaign, I had a platform, and, you know, things changed. But I also believe that, you know, budgeting process is a work in progress. But I initially said that I would work hard to prevent a 19.9% increase, or 19% increase. And but that was sort of predicated on the Commissioners balancing the budget last year. But I still stuck to that. You know, I think I said it, so, you know, I I think that at this point in time, I can't support the 19.9 in one year. I could be convinced, but I'm not convinced right now.
Okay.
So that's pretty much where I'm at. I do, I should also comment, though, that I think staffing is important, and sometimes when you add staff, even though when you don't want to, you save money later, especially in human services. And I really feel personally that we should support our veterans. And to me, that's just the right thing to do. So I would support that 0.5. It's been justified, and so that's basically where I'm at.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Dukirk.
Just to remind people that reducing the EDA levy does not reduce our levy. It reduces the total tax burden to the taxpayer, but it doesn't knock ours down. Wish it did, that'd make it easier. So I'll start from the bottom. Option C, single year, 14.9. Only gives us $13,000 for capital project capacity when we were looking at, on a hopeful of having 36,000.
Million.
Million, sorry, millions, millions. So 13 million instead of 36 million. And Commissioner Deschamps has said that maybe we've estimated our numbers high on our projects, and so let's hope he's correct, and we don't need the full 36 million. So I can't support Option C, just because when I look from C to B, the difference in your third-year taxes will be $55. I'm not going to leave $7 million on the table for a $55 tax burden to the average payer. I just, that my whole entire life is business and budgets. I'm not going to, that's silly. Sorry, that's just my personal opinion. I'm not knocking anybody. And I look at A and C, then we have 27 million. But asking the taxpayers 14.9, 10.9, and 9.9 is a hard thing to do. I'd rather just do the 19.9 and then go down to 5.9 so that they don't have this continued stress. I know for a few of our taxpayers, the continual double-digit taxing is not an easy thing to keep talking about. So although even $7 million on the table, which I don't like doing, Option B is the plan that I would support. We still lose 16 million from where we were originally. But I think it's the best option for where we're at, and that serves the most people. And I am listening to taxpayers. I'm listening to people tell me we understand what you're doing and we support you. And so I know that's not what everyone is saying to me. I know that some people are saying they disagree. I get that. But the majority of the people that are contacting me are telling me, "Do it in one shot, get it done, and let's move forward."
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling.
Thank you. Well, I've read over my notes from about 150 people who attended the different meetings. And it seems like what I am coming out with is balance the budget and get it done in one year, because I wasn't going there. But then we look at three years, we're really spending more money in the three years. So I've changed my mind. Now, if we would set it at 19, that doesn't mean we can still come down. We can still, you know... We can still, you know, because we've got things that we need to look at. So there's still the possibility of, of bringing it down lower. So in our capital fund, I don't know if I've ever seen a list of capital projects. We've talked about the roof and the windows here, and some maintenance on community center, and.
Without, Madam Chair and Commissioners, without adding to any capacity, with just fixing the things that we have, we were looking at about one and a half million, if we look at the East and West End facilities, two and a half to three million dollars, four point seven in highway projects. So of that, we're looking at seven to eight million dollars this year. And that, that's not getting anything, that's not looking at, at fixing whatever, whatever we would want to do with the law enforcement center. That's not, that's really not looking at very, we were, we were showing in the first representation, ten million dollars of additional transportation sales tax-funded projects a few years out, and, and looking at paying for, County Seventeen is in the budget for what we're planning on bonding for this year for construction next year. Construction related to Highway Forty-five is in the next big chunk, and we've got to scope that. That budget is somewhere between eight and nine million dollars now, maybe the right number's six or seven, maybe it's five to six, I don't know, but it's a big number. Nobody's arguing that it's not a big number. So just between what we're planning, needing to do now, and what that one project looks like, we're somewhere between twelve and fifteen million. And, and I, and I, the reason that I was willing to put these numbers out and show a twenty-million-dollar capacity is, is I think it is, I heard it at the, at the TOF meeting, that this is a lot to bite off in one chunk. Can we balance the budget and then think about big projects next? And we can, and we can have the conversations about those big projects going forward, but just this year's numbers are a couple to three million dollars in capital improvements, and, and that first big chunk of, of transportation sales tax dollars. So that, without, we're not really changing anything, we're just fixing what we have for that kind of money.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Kind of what Jeff said, when you're doing windows and roofs, you don't really see what you're spending your money on, except for that stupid sticky note might be off that window finally, and that says, "Don't touch." I think for the taxpayers, since I've been here, the requests from our community and the needs from our community has gone up, and up, and up, and up, and we've responded, and we continue to meet those needs, but you don't see it on a daily basis, it's not something in your hand that you can touch and feel. And then, instead of billing them for all the services that are increased, we've just pushed it down the line and not paid for it, or paid for it with savings, or, and so you're getting the services, but when I come to you and say, "On the median home, the increase for 2018 is going to be two hundred and ten dollars," well, when I walk into a store, I want a huge bag for two hundred and ten dollars of some really nice shoes or something. So I get it, it's really hard to visualize what you're getting for that two hundred and ten dollars, and I think people want to see us, like, give them something for it, but we've already been giving, we just haven't been charging for it, and it's kind of on the description that we have with us in Lake County, they're selling it for three dollars, and they're paying two dollars and fifty cents. Well, we're selling it for two bucks, and we're paying two dollars and fifty cents for it. So we've been eating fifty cents on everything that we sell.
Okay. I just wanted to weigh in too, and say that I highly support the nineteen point nine percent with subsequent increases of five point nine and four point nine, which is the bite it off in one year, which I heard from people, and I also heard that people do not want it to affect levy, and actually, this option affects levy almost the least. And the other piece about this option, with the twelve, going above twelve percent, there's actually an opportunity with this rebate to be lower than option C, which does, which results in thirteen million versus twenty million in capacity. So I really want to support that nineteen point nine, because I think we have an opportunity to both have, come up with the lowest levy implication, and work toward our financial improvement plan the most effectively. So that, that's why I'm supporting that, that piece. And again, as you stated, Commissioner Sterling, doesn't mean we can't still work at that nineteen point nine and get it done, but I think as Commissioner DuKirk has said on many occasions, it's like, don't promise, don't over-deliver and under, don't over-promise, under-deliver. So I think, when I say nineteen point nine, I mean it, I think we, we should actually honor that, should look forward and honor it, and unless there's something that we haven't thought of that really makes a difference. But what I see as far as value to the taxpayer, it's the best value by far, it's amazing this value, and we still have an opportunity to make improvements and sustain the value that we already have, and sustain our quality way of life as well. And which also means, which also equates to property values. So when you think of sustaining value, quality of life value, that also sustains property values. And I think what I heard from several of the taxpayers was that they had lost money on their investments since 2008, property values plummeted, and I think by investing in our community, we actually have an opportunity to add value to our properties. So that's the other reason I, in support of this higher, pay the taxes and, and be more assured of having good property values in the future. So I think it's a good investment in our community to do the nineteen point nine, in my opinion. Yes.
You know what's so scary about this, though, is we don't have a crystal ball to say, okay, next year we'll be at, let's say, four or five, and then we have the unknown. And I feel that if we, you know, say the nineteen nine, be no hiring, no firing, of course, no hiring, we'll just basically say no to everything, won't we? So I think, well, I mean, I think departments and people will understand that there's really no wiggle room, but if they have something big that happens, you know, what are we going to, you know, how are we going to handle that? And I, we can't solve it now, but this is my fear, that next year, we will just be tighter than a witch with most everything that comes before us. Is that, is that kind of fear that's not necessary, or?
Well, I think we're, we're actually preparing way better for that fear by doing the nineteen point nine this year. I think we're actually saying, if this happens, we will be in a worse position than we are now, we'll be in a better position than we are now. So I think we are actually responding to that fear much better by opting for this nineteen point nine. We're preparing ourselves for better financial decisions and for more security, actually. So I don't see this adding fear, I see this eliminating some fears, that we heard a lot about the last tongue, a few times. Commissioner DuKirk?
We actually do have a crystal ball.
Oh.
It's our, it's our history, it's our backwards ball, that has shown us when we don't set the levy to cover our bills, we don't, we end up having to continually come back at this nineteen point nine. I think if we set it at fourteen point nine, I don't know that we can promise five point nine. I think that, you know, you're taking away from your fund balance, and you're taking away from the needs, and so I think at nineteen point nine, that gives us, that starts moving us back in the direction where we had some room, and when Eilers was here, they showed that our fund balance, we could hold on that for a while. And so I think that at nineteen point nine, I can finally breathe and not have anxiety attacks every night, because I know that we're moving forward. You know, when, when you look at the five hundred and fifty thousand we didn't pay for when we dropped the levy from nineteen point nine last year, that's eight positions, and we weren't willing to get rid of the eight positions. And I don't think, at this point, we're discussing eight positions again, or eight. No, and so I think nineteen point nine is safer, and when you look at Brady brought up for us when we were at twenty-five percent, if we had stayed at three, we would have been okay. Some years would have been tough, and we would have had to think about it, and we wouldn't have maybe had to pull from savings, but if we had stayed steady, if we had just set it and stuck to it, and said, "This is where we're going forward," we wouldn't be looking at this this year. We wouldn't even be looking at six. So use the backwards ball, and look at history to tell us where to go in the future.
When I met with Senator Franken up in here in Portage with Norman and them, he said that he's on the health care board, and they, they don't know what the President's doing, they don't know what President Trump's doing. What if we lose funding to our hospital? Then does that come down back to the county, and then you ask the taxpayers for another twenty percent next year? You know, it's a, there's.
This is not, that's the unknown.
Yeah.
That's the unknown, yeah. It's the clinic that's losing funding, and they don't have tax authority.
Well, the money's got to come from somewhere to take care of the people in the county.
Right.
You know, that's the unknown here, you're hitting people with a twenty percent tax now. You don't, like Senator Franken said, he doesn't know what's going on out there. It's a day-to-day thing. We met with him for an hour and a half in Portage on these subjects, and.
And that's terrifying. If we, like the county that Jane and I talked to, the commissioner, if we don't pay our debt and get rid of our burden that we keep carrying, and then another burden comes in, what are we going to do?
Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I was recently elected, as well as Mr. Dusha, and pretty much my message was financial planning and fiscal management, and so I know that I strongly support that we take care of this, you know, balance that's been passed down. I mean, I mentioned that before, but I really feel strongly, because if we don't do it now, and something else happens, and we're all the more deeper. I think also we found out that our fund balance is still healthy, and that we, we don't have to pay into that, but we should not be taking from it. And as Mr. Powers has said, you know, we've got something there to soften the landing a little bit. But I feel strongly that we do need to take care of this, you know, debt that we have in balancing budget. I want to just reiterate that. I, I just, I'll promise that I'm going to go nineteen, nineteen point nine percent if I could help it. But, but I, I'm, I'm open to whatever passes, and I'll support it.
Great. I agree with Bobby, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen, I don't know what our president's going to do, I don't know what's going to happen to our clinic and hospital, but I know what's going to happen to us if we don't pay our debt.
And I think we're using fear as a tool to guide us to become more safe, and I think that's what this plan is about, this nineteen point nine plus creating capacity of twenty million, helps us become more safe. That's, that's why I'm advocating for it. We're already in a fearful spot, and if we keep moving forward with that strategy, we create more fear, and, and the thing that we're all afraid of will happen. This is, this, these numbers come from a serious, thoughtful approach, which we have invested in over this past year by discussion and attending many meetings, educating ourselves, hiring Eilers to create this tool for us, and this plan is a result of all of that. And I, I just feel strongly that we're going down the right road for the first time, and that we will be able to level up now, and not keep spreading that fear. We're, we're, we're responding to the fear that's already been, we're trying to correct that, and move forward towards security, and do good work, invest well, create, and sustain the quality of life that we appreciate by living here.
Maybe the word would be caution with our eyes wide open. Some caution.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what education helps you with.
Yes. So, is anyone else, I, I would make a motion. I would make a motion that we set the preliminary levy increase at nineteen point nine percent, and I, I could add the subsequent increases of five point nine and four point nine, but that will have to, so I would just make the motion to make the preliminary levy increase at nineteen point nine percent. Should I add, I could add what it includes, but I think for this, yeah. For this motion, that's, that's what it is. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Okay. Further discussion? Anybody else would like to discuss this further? All those opposed? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Motion passes three to two. And again, this is the preliminary levy increase, so we will go forward from that.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, we have one other item that we have to do, and that's to set the date for the Truth in Taxation meeting, and I'll let Brady give the parameters on that.
So we have to hold it between November twenty-fifth and December thirtieth, and it has to be held after six P.M., so the public can be allowed to speak.
Brady, did you have an issue last year, people getting their notices early enough before we had the meeting?
Could I just make a request for consideration? It's not that firm, but I have a sister in California that's failing, and my family and I are plannary, trying to go out to see her before it's too late, during the month of December eighteenth through twenty-first, twenty-second, somewhere in that time. Of course, that's alternative, she could pass away before then, but so, you know, but I do know that that's a plan if everything goes as well, so I would ask that, or at least if you do it during that week, then I may be gone.
Traditionally, we try to do it the last week in November.
I'd be back on the twenty-sixth.
November?
Oh, November, excuse me.
Yes, we try not to go all the way into December. And we also.
That's my only request, I just heard December thirtieth, so.
It's the latest we can do it. In the first week of December, we're at AOC.
Are you there? Are you? So I'm fine in November.
I'm just worried about the tax notices getting there in time.
I'm not, no, we can do it.
So last year was on, it was on a Monday, would be the equivalent of November twenty-seventh this year, is that correct?
Yep. Is everybody available that day?
Which one?
November twenty-seventh, nobody is.
On a Monday? Yeah, I guess I got L R D C in Duluth, but I can get back in time. It's in evening, right? Seven o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Yeah, it just, it has to, it has to go after, until after six, but you could start then, you could start early, as long as it goes past.
Okay, is that, that works for everybody? The Truth in Taxation meeting set for six o'clock.
I'll make that motion, November twenty-seventh, six P.M.
I support.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.